Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the meeting of the Tallahassee City Commission to order. It is 3:05 on July 7th, Wednesday, July 7th. If you wouldn't mind taking your seat, and our colleagues would please come join us. I saw Commissioner Richardson in chambers earlier. Oh, he's here. We've got a great agenda. We have a long agenda. We have several people to recognize as well, so we're going to go ahead and get started. It is my honor and privilege to introduce and invite Pastor Michael Taluba of the Clonan United Methodist Church to provide the invocation. Pastor, thank you so much for joining us. Ladies and gentlemen, will you please rise?
Let's pray together. God, we thank you so much for this day and the opportunity to gather in this place to do the work of the government, to serve this community. God, we thank you for all of our leaders throughout our city. We pray for their protection. God, we pray for people on the path of the storm today. God, we love you. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, if you will bear with me for just a second and remain standing, I would like to invite the Capital Park Dizzy Dean baseball team that just represented us in the World Series in Mississippi, to please come down front. We are very honored to have these young men that represented the capital city literally in the World Series in Mississippi. I'm going to ask them to remove their baseball caps and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is to my right, audience to your left. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Gentlemen, if you'll remain standing there, I know that my colleagues want to join me for a quick picture. And as we're moving down, I cannot tell you how proud we are of the job well done. You represented not only yourself and your team and your families, but the capital city. So, very well. Thank you and congratulations. Let me move down as well.
One, two, three.
Good afternoon to everyone. Thank you all for this opportunity to recognize a group of young men who, on behalf of Capital Park, 14 and under, have gone to South Haven, Mississippi and participated in the Dizzy Dean World Series. This is the first experience for a team from the south side at Capital Park to participate in such an event. And these young men, along with the coaches who went with them, represented our park very well. And so, we are very happy. We're very proud. At Capital Park, we like to say, we like to birth dreams and create opportunities. And so, these young men that you see in front of you, we're birthing their dreams and hopefully creating opportunities. And it's not just with baseball. We hope that we see some on the commission. We hope that we see them out here doing some of the things that you all are doing. But whatever it is that they endeavor to do in their lives, we hope that we're adding some value to that. Thank you all so very much. I'm Michael Smith. I represent the park as one of the board members, the vice president, on behalf of the other board members who are not here, and also one of the assistant coaches. But the person that'll speak next will be Walter Wiggins, who is one of the three coaches that actually took the young men to South Haven, and they deserve the credit, as well as the parents who did the fundraising and all that good stuff. Thank you all so very much.
It was truly an honor to be able to go myself with also Coach Elkon Gray and Coach Sean Ferguson to take these young men. We're missing one who's not with us right now. But it was truly an enjoyable opportunity. We were able to finish third in the tournament. The boys, they did an outstanding job. And as people have asked me, they'll say, "Well, what happened?" I said, "Coach did that." That's on Coach. They should have done a little bit better, but that was on Coach. But we were extremely proud of them, not only for placing third, but in the eyes of everyone there, not only at the baseball field, but also at the hotels in which we stayed, they received, and Coach left the trophies and the plaque, the sportsmanship One of the things that we told them is that not only were they representing themselves, but they were representing their families, they were representing their teammates, and also their city. And one of the things that we heard from the park, and not only from the park, but the hotel managers, is that they'd never had a group of young men, just to be so courteous and just to be so well behaved. And as well as being great baseball players, they're going to be great citizens. And that's the thing that we're most proud of.
I just wanted to formally introduce myself. I'm Coach Elkon Gray. I'm a Tallahassee native, born and raised here. I played at Capital Park, two years in Little League, two years in junior major. And this is my first year back at the park. I've been coaching out of chairs all the way up until now. And it truly has been a blessed opportunity for me and an honor to coach such a great, young, talented group of kids, you know, with such heart and such energy to put in towards a sport like this. Just want to tell you guys how proud I am. I really am super, super proud of you guys, man. Probably honestly, the best group of kids I've ever coached. So, thank you, guys.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Diane, if you wouldn't mind staying with me, and Curtis staying with me as well. All right. Thank you, boys. We certainly appreciate it. Gentlemen, thank you. Coaches, really appreciate it. So, we have two amazing presentations today. The first one, I would like to invite, by the way, on a personal note, I don't know if you know this or not, but before she was elected city commissioner, Diane Williams-Cox actually served as the baseball commissioner at Capital Park. So, you've got some skin in the game, I believe, Diane. Absolutely. And also, thanks to all the parents for everything that y'all have done to support the team as well. We certainly appreciate it. I would now like to invite my colleague, Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox, for a special presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. I come before you as a proud graduate of Florida A&amp;M University. We lost a giant in our community, in our university. And we want to make sure that his family knows that we recognize that and we appreciate who he is, because I believe he still lives, in the lives of all of us, and for the work that he did while here. We have with us in chambers, the Director of Communications for Florida A&amp;M University. Please join me, Mr. Keith Miles. We also have Miss Everything FAMU, Carmen Cummins. I won't even limit you to one title. And we also have online, come forward, please. We also have online the youngest son of Dr. Frederick Humphries. So, if you could bring over Mr. Lawrence Humphries.
He is joining us via WebEx this afternoon.
Right. Okay. There he is. Okay. So, from the governing body of the City of Tallahassee, a proclamation, whereas Frederick S. Humphries, Sr., Ph.D., under whose leadership Florida A&amp;M University, FAMU, was named College of the Year, and who was a lifelong cheerleader and advocate for his alma mater, died Thursday, June 24th, 2021, in Orlando, Florida, at age 85. And whereas Dr. Humphries had a distinguished career in higher education as FAMU president and president of Tennessee State University in Nashville, along with his almost three decades of leading two historically black colleges and universities. The Appalachia Cola, Florida, native, served on countless corporate boards and earned an impressive list of accolades and awards. And whereas Dr. Humphries, whose six-foot-seven frame, booming voice, and easy smile commanded attention wherever he went, was a trained scientist. He graduated magna cum laude with a Bachelor of Science in Chemistry from FAMU in 1957 and completed a master's and a doctorate in physical chemistry from the University of Pittsburgh. He was the first African American to obtain a Ph.D. in his discipline from the University of Pittsburgh. And whereas the 16 years of his tenure are described as FAMU's golden years, he created the Life Gets Better Scholarship and the Graduate School Feeder Program, which more than doubled enrollment while simultaneously raising academic standard. And whereas Dr. Humphries increased the number of national achievement scholars, ranking first in the nation, three times surpassing Harvard University and Stanford University. He also helped boost FAMU to the nation's number-one spot as a producer of African-Americans with baccalaureate degrees and to number three in the nation as the baccalaureate institution of origin for African-American doctoral degree recipients. And whereas he was respected internationally for his keen insights on the education of minority students and his unique and visionary approaches to producing successful educational outcomes. And whereas he is survived by three children, Frederick Jr. of Washington, D.C., Robin Tanya Watson of Orlando, and Lawrence Humphries of Houston, Texas, and eight grandchildren. Antoinette McTurner Humphries, his wife of 46 years, died in 2006. And whereas the popular former president will forever be recognized for his inspiring, unmatched delivery of the Rattler charge at FAMU or wherever Rattlers gather, you better know he's doing it in heaven where all Rattlers go. And now, therefore, I, John E. Daley, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize Frederick S. Humphries, Sr., Ph.D. It is with great pride and pleasure, we present this to you, for the family. I know, it's, yes, yes, it is emotional. I had the great honor of sitting in on his interview when he came to interview for the job at FAMU. And I graduated and went on in life, but we met again later in life, and I sat at his feet, and he gave words of wisdom and advice in a time that I really, really needed it. So, I wanted to, want to thank you all for being here, and I want to thank Lawrence for allowing us to bestow this honor upon your dad, and thank you for the sacrifices that the family made for him to be all that he is to us. And here's Darrell Jones. I was wondering where you were, Darrell. Just in town. We just finished the proclamation. We're going to ask Lawrence, if you would like to say something, if you would, please unmute him so that he can say something.
To Mayor Daley, Commissioner Cox, Commissioner Richardson, all the members of the Tallahassee City Commission, obviously Keith Miles and Carmen Cummins, for without them, all of the special plans and the homegoing for my dad would not be possible. And last but not least, on behalf of my family and siblings, Fred Jr. and Robin Tanya, I humbly accept this honor and proclamation from the City of Tallahassee. We very much appreciate the council for recognizing the contributions of my father. You know, he was president of two different universities, but by far, his love for FAMU was just beyond measure. I grew up in Tallahassee. I went to FAMU High, I was a baby rattler. And I am also very, very personally appreciative and humbled that I'm able to, you know, pipe in through video to accept this great, great honor from the City of Tallahassee. I'm sure my father's smiling down on all of us, and I am sure that if, in fact, the clouds are dark and there is thunder in Tallahassee due to the weather, he's doing that strike song. So, from a grateful family, all the best, and I look forward to seeing all of you, you know, over the weekend, and thanking you personally for this great honor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'd also like to convey our gratitude, as Keith Miles comes and joins me, to all of you, mayor, commissioners, and everyone who decided to drive this idea. He is so worthy. And this is truly a light that radiates from the cradle of government in downtown Tallahassee to the highest of seven hills. It's truly a bright spot in a journey of dark clouds for Lawrence, for Robin Tanya, and Fred. But especially today, happy birthday, Lawrence Humphries. What a better way to bring a little sunshine to your special day today. And we are honored and humble, as Rattlers, to be a part of it. And this gentleman right here, who truly knows the legacy, is going to come forward. Please welcome Keith Miles, Director of Communications, Florida Agricultural and Mechanical University.
Thank you, Carmen. I just want to thank Mayor Daley and the city commissioners, and of course, this rattler here, Diane Williams-Cox, for this great honor. It's for Lawrence. Today is Lawrence's birthday, as was noted, and this is a special presentation on a special day for Lawrence. And I want to thank the mayor, who will be at the public wake on Friday to actually present the proclamation to the family and to the FAMU family. And on behalf of Dr. Larry Robinson, who could not be here today, we are honored to join with you in this celebration, in the Humphries family, and we look forward to continuing our great relationship between FAMU and the City of Tallahassee.
Mr. City Manager, I'm going to ask Amy Zubley to please come join me for the next presentation. And if you will please tee it up for us, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're pleased to have Amy Zubley. She is with the Florida Municipal Electric Association on behalf of the American Public Power Association, and she's here to present the city with an award from the American Public Power Association.
I am. Good afternoon, mayor and commissioners, everyone. I'm Amy Zubley. I'm the executive director of the Florida Municipal Electric Association, which is the statewide trade association representing Florida's 33 public power utilities, like the City of Tallahassee. Nationally, there are more than 2,000 public power utilities in all 50 states but Hawaii that are collectively represented by our National Trade Association, the American Public Power Association, or APPA. Every year at APPA's national conference, they recognize excellence in utility operations and leadership with the most sought-after awards and honors in public power. This year, FMEA had the distinct pleasure of nominating the City of Tallahassee for the APPA EF Scattergood System Achievement Award, which honors APPA member systems that have enhanced the prestige of public power utilities through sustained achievement and customer service. From the City of Tallahassee's restoration efforts following Hermine, Irma, Michael, and your unwavering support of the mutual aid process and helping countless other public power utilities in need, to the multitude of customer-focused initiatives, including the Neighborhood Reach and Change for Change programs, as well as your efforts to help the community during the COVID-19 pandemic with payment deferral and suspension of disconnects, to your commitment to clean energy and responding to the desires of your community, I cannot think of a more worthy utility. This is the same of the award that the City of Tallahassee was recognized with back in 2012 that earns you all the "Number One Public Utility in America" slogan. After looking through the Scattergood Award recipients that date back to 1959, there are very few utilities in this country that have the distinct pleasure of being able to receive it twice. Not only in my capacity of FMEA, but as a resident of this great city for more than 30 years now, I am incredibly proud that the City of Tallahassee was once again selected for this great achievement and continues to be the number-one public utility in America. Congratulations to all of you. Reese, Richard Ash, Robin Gare, I know he's not here, James Barnes is not here, you all and your teams do incredible work. I hope that you all and the citizens of Tallahassee are as proud of your local utility as I am, and congratulations on this great honor.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for allowing me to comment. And Amy, thanks so much for the recognition. It's a really nice compliment when you're recognized by your peer groups. And as Amy indicated, we're a member of more than 2,000 public power utilities around the country. And so, when you're recognized by your peers, that speaks volumes. And I would be remiss if I didn't recognize the men and women that serve our community every day in keeping our utilities, not just owned, but leading the country, leaning forward with a renewable view, making sure they're affordable, making sure they're reliable. And I will tell you that today, the plan was to have many of those individuals here. I think for obvious reasons, we know why they're not, because they're standing in the front of the line, and they're keeping our power on, they're keeping our utilities safe. Now, we have been very fortunate to dodge a bullet with a storm that appears to almost, by God's will possibly, wrapped around us today so we can have this meeting. But they have been working tirelessly, they stand ready. And I told Richard, who is the interim general manager, I said, "Richard, we'll understand if you're not here tonight." But we wanted to share our thanks with them, our appreciation with them. They make us proud every day. And on behalf of them and the entire organization, thank you for the recognition.
So, while everybody is getting situated and seated again, what a great honor to be named the number-one public utility in the nation once again. Amy Zubley, before you leave, because I know you're extremely busy today, one thing about Amy, first of all, I've known Amy for a long time. We waited tables at Applebee's back in college together, many moons ago. But, so, folks, when we have storm events that come through the state of Florida, when we have tropical storms, when we have the hurricanes, what's fascinating is the level of cooperation between communities. So, heaven forbid, if we were to receive a direct hit from a hurricane, other public utilities would come to our aid through mutual aid agreements, and we reciprocate. And I'm sure that we are lining up aid to go to other communities. A lot of that coordination comes from Amy Zubley. Not only is she a resident of Tallahassee, but she does amazing work, one of the people behind the scenes that we don't see day in and day out when we face tropical storms and hurricanes. So, while I have the chance, Amy, just want to say thank you to you and your team for everything that you do, not only for Tallahassee, but the entire state of Florida through the mutual aid agreements, and trying to take care of our community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Absolutely. So, as we move forward, two quick recognitions as well. I think I saw a former Commissioner Gil Ziffer, who's in the audience in the back. Gil, thank you for joining us. Certainly do appreciate it.
I'm holding his, I'm holding his seat down.
There you go.
Mayor, there is an empty chair. Commissioner Porter's online.
There you go. And then, also, Eisenelder, welcome to your city commission chambers. It's good to see you, young man. Eisen is a boy scout from Troop 109 with my son Tommy. He is currently working on his government badge, and I am so honored and pleased to see you here, young man. Thanks for joining us today. So, do we have any announcements, Mr. Manager, moving forward with the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, if we could cover the agenda modifications to make sure we get that covered.
I'm sorry. Sure.
And also, just procedurally acknowledge that Commissioner Porter's online with a vote of the commission to allow her participation.
Excellent. First of all, let's go ahead and take that up. Any concerns or questions with Commissioner Porter participating virtually?
I would move that we allow her to participate virtually, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, signed by everybody, Commissioner Williams-Cox, okay. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes 4-0. Commissioner Porter, can you hear us okay? Your connection good? All right. We'll continue to work on that as well. You want to go through the agenda modifications?
Yes, sir. I sure will. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, several items have been added to your material. Those include item 5.02, which you have taken up, item 11.04, item 11.05, and item 15.04 have been added. In addition, an update was included in the text, item 1302, to reflect the meeting of the Real Estate Committee, which happened after the agenda item was posted. And finally, item 9.04 has been pulled from consent.
Excellent. Okay. Any questions, colleagues? Seeing none, let's move forward. Do we have any appearances by other governments or appointed boards before the city commission?
No, sir.
Okay. We are on citizen input on agenda items. Let's take our citizen comment now. Mr. Clerk, will you please walk us through?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Tonight, or this afternoon, at this point, all of our speakers are on policy items. We don't have anyone who has yet signed up for public hearing, nor do we have anyone who's signed up for un-agendaed comments, which come at the end of the meeting. So, we'll be hearing from all of our citizens at this part of our meeting. And we'll begin with Max Epstein. But each speaker, as is our practice and policy, will have three minutes to provide remarks. I'll give you a heads up when you're at 30 seconds, but the green light will turn yellow at that point, and then red when your three minutes have expired. And we'll start with Max Epstein, and then Sue Dick.
Excellent. Mr. Epstein, thank you so much for joining us. Yeah, we can pass it out. I got you. Just take one and pass it down? Okay. Your name and address for the record, please?
Sir, it's Max Epstein, 1001 San Luis Road. I guess we only have three minutes for the entirety of this, but I'm here to primarily speak about the sale of the downtown parcels. There are a few nice trees on the edge, very edge on the street, that I think should be saved. But this is an opportunity for you to fund ashmores. This money was originally for a performing arts center. And actually, 300,000, or 800,000 of TDT funding, the same source, was used to demolish the three buildings that were there. The CRA also gave 562,000 to a nonprofit after they'd raised 100,000 out of 100 million that was required to do this. Now, you probably know that I don't think that you should be acting on this, giving the money to TLH Arts at the moment. A lot of this without sustainability, without ownership, without a lot of things that have been already set out. But the fact is, this money was always intended. And right now, you're selling it for a million dollars more than what you paid for it. This money was always intended to be for the performing arts, the performing arts center. This would be the perfect time to designate a million of that for the sale and the refurbishment of ashmores. And if you want to take it further, this money should be used for public good. How about we use some of that money to restore the Robinsons Grocery Store? And look at other historic preservation opportunities that also incorporate in steam and STEM learning, just like our proposals, original proposal for ashmores. This is a real opportunity to have a community benefit from the sale of these funds. And, you know, you can keep half of it for the deficiencies fund, take the other half out. And when there are historic buildings that come up, like the All Saints Buildings, that maybe they need $100,000 to prevent that from being destroyed, well, you'll have a fund for that. Well, I've said enough on that. We have the backflow item that you have, it's very important. This prevents contamination coming into the house. Apopka is currently under a consent order for FDEP for not, or following the new DEP rules. So, it's important for you to continue with this item. Also, we have, you have an item for contaminated sites. We really need to look at not just the city-owned sites. And when we look at redeveloping properties requiring the cleanup, if you look at SOMO walls, why are they putting all the seating on the street? Because there's a brown field on the inside. Well, we need to be cleaning up these sites, and we need help from the government, local, state, and federal to do this.
You have just a few seconds for me.
Thank you. In conclusion, also, the citizens really need to know about these consent orders, and the transparency needs to increase, especially- the transparency needs to increase, especially for items over $100,000. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Epstein. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Next speaker, Sue Dick, and then Grant Gelhart.
Ms. Dick, good to see you. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good to see you. Sue Dick, President and CEO of the Greater Tallahassee Chamber of Commerce, 300 East Park Avenue. It's nice to see everyone. First, I want to recognize you, acknowledging the earlier budget workshop you had and the passage of the city budget to your leadership and the work of city staff, passing a budget without an increase to the military rate. As the business community and our community, that's a very strong statement, and I know there's a lot of work done towards that, so I want to thank you for that. Also, I want to speak towards Agenda Item 1302. Always like to take the opportunity, as we come before you, as the Greater Tallahassee Chamber of Commerce, to talk about jobs and the number of jobs that are needed within our community by 2030. That number is that number, you've heard before, 16,000, 1,700 jobs a year between now and then. Lots of activity, a lot of great work being done by the Office of Economic Vitality and by our local businesses, working to create jobs. But I'm here to speak with regards to support of Agenda Item 1302, to the sale of the two city parcels to the Valencia Group. Both proposed hotel projects are anticipated to employ close to 200 individuals, not to mention the economic impacts and jobs that are created by construction and such projects in our community. I think it's a strong statement to our community to have private sector investors look at our community and realize that this is also a win-win opportunity, and I would like to thank the Valencia Group for showing that support within our local market. We all know that Tallahassee continues to grow as a destination within tourism, but not just tourism, for leisure travel, but the strong businesses that are here, our universities, and our athletic events that can bring individuals to our community, that again, continue to employ people within our great hotels in our downtown area. So I'm here to support Agenda Item 1302. Want to thank you for your consideration, and thank the representatives from Valencia Group for showing a strong support for our community, and seeing that we are a destination that needs to be developed as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Grant Gelhart, speaking on Item 1303, green building policy, followed by Danielle Irwin.
Mr. Gelhart, good, great to see you. Name and address for the record, please.
Grant Gelhart, I live at 1906 Chulini. I wanted to come up here and speak in support of the green building policy. The Big Ben Sierra Club and the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee has been working with John Powell, the Director of Environmental Regulation Services and Facilities for the city of Tallahassee, to develop a green building policy. John was very easy to work with, and took all our recommendations to heart, and drafted what we believe is a cutting-edge policy that will ensure Tallahassee is a leader in sustainability and green buildings, and that all future city buildings will address sustainability, be net-zero ready, be solar-ready, and EV-ready, and meet high standards, such as a minimum of gold leaf standards for the buildings. Being energy-efficient buildings will save the city money on the future utility bills, reduce the city's carbon footprint, and move the city forward in meeting the goals of being 100% renewable energy community. We are very happy with draft, happy with staff, and would recommend the adoption of this policy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
Danielle Irwin, on Item 1303, and also 1305, FDEP consent orders.
Ms. Irwin, great to see you. Your name and address for the record, please.
Danielle Irwin, 3185 Ferns Glen Drive, 32309. Nice to see you all. I'll first speak on Policy 1303, the green building policy. I'm very excited about this policy. It was something that I had talked about while I was on the campaign trail, and I've been in the environmental industry in Florida for 20 years, and some of our greatest cities in the state have lots of green buildings, and they're something to be proud of. Now that we are a lead-designated community, this is exactly the type of public policy that I love to see coming out of our city. And I want to share with you what an asset John Powell is as well. He's been great to work with. I think John and I, and the others involved in drafting this and working together on it, would agree that this is a starting point. We have further steps to take. So I encourage you to adopt the policy today, but I also want you to think about, why would this policy not also apply to the new buildings that are coming to our airport, and major expansion of the airport wing itself? So it seems like that would be in line with this policy. Also, think about how publicly funded projects, not just public buildings, but, for example, buildings that receive CRA money, they should also be following this public policy. Those are future steps that I hope we'll be taking. I want to plant that seed now for you, though. There's only one line I want to highlight, for your benefit as well as the benefit of the audience, from the agenda item. Studies have shown that there is generally no significant difference, I'll repeat that, no significant difference, between the average cost of a green building and a traditionally-designed building, plus you get a return on your investment for any initial capital outlay. So it is the way to be moving forward. I commend, I hope that you vote in support of that. I'll briefly touch on 1305 as well, FDEP consent orders. I'm former Deputy Director of the Division of Water Resource Management at DEP. I had to sign many warning letters and consent orders that were sent to municipalities such as your own. And I believe that the county commission should be aware of any time a consent order is being signed with the state that obligates the city to do certain improvements, which includes capital investment. So I'd like you to consider that as the policy going forward, and I believe that's what's before you in your agenda item as well. Remember, though, that before you get to any consent order, there is a warning letter step taken, and that is an official agency action by DEP. So even if you don't vote on warning letters, I would encourage you to ask your staff to bring you warning letters that are presented to the city if they come up, because if warning letters aren't resolved, consent orders result. So thank you so much for your time. It's been great to be here before you, and happy voting tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
Next speaker is Mita Calder, followed by Kathy McGuire.
Ms. Calder, thank you so much for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Mita Calder, 3740 Ravine Drive, and I'm here on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee. I want to thank the City Commission for taking on this issue, this, I'm talking about the green building policy, I'm sorry, and to advocate for adopting this policy. Our city has a well-deserved history of implementing actions that protect the environment, and adoption and implementation of this policy will serve to reinforce that reputation and further the goal of reaching 100% renewable energy use by 2050. Every building that is energy-independent not only reduces our dependence on fossil fuels, but frees up renewable energy produced by our solar farms to meet our other energy needs. As acknowledged in the staff's excellent report, buildings are a primary source of energy consumption and greenhouse gas emissions. Attention to the construction and renovation of city buildings demonstrates a self-reflective awareness and intent to address this problem in a sustainable manner. The policy looks to the future, and through the adoption of a schedule for regular review of building performance, provides a mechanism for incorporating new technology and continued improvement. I have learned a lot in the process of advocating for this policy, and look forward to learning more as the city develops building requirements to implement the green building policy and develop the city's green energy plan. So thank you very much, and special thanks, thanks to John Powell for his positive input energy on helping out with this worthwhile initiative. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker, please.
Next is Kathy McGuire, also on Item 1303, followed by Steve Bean.
Ms. McGuire, thank you so much for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. It's nice to be back in the building. I'm Kathy McGuire. I live at 1101 Pine Street, and I'm here tonight on the green code. I'm very excited that you're, hopefully, will be passing it tonight. And of course, one of the big projects that will be coming up pretty soon, I think, is our redevelopment of Northwood Mall. And during the discussion to purchase the property, the commission committed to getting public input on how that would unfold, and I know that the decision's been made to put the police department there, but it's, it's a big site that seems to offer a lot of other opportunities. As mentioned, when you were looking at it, it's adjacent to two schools, it's on public transit, it's near active public, or excuse me, active neighborhood associations. And I read in the paper that, you know, there's some preliminary design effort going started, or maybe consultant hired. I'm not really clear about that, to be honest. So I just wanted to come and ask when you all might anticipate starting public input on the Northwood project.
Real quick, Mr. Mayor, when do we begin public input processes?
Mr. Mayor, we started that now well over a year ago, maybe as much as two years ago. Ms. McGuire, let me get you connected with John Powell, which you've heard a lot about on the green building policy. He's also in, in that line of work. He's, he's right at the back of the audience. I'll get you connected. But there has been outreach and input already, and it will continue. Is, it relates to the project status. The site is being master-planned, first and foremost. The site of the, the police station is being determined, and I think that's kind of coming in for a landing, where it could go, and then how it could complement what might else occur around it. So there's a lot of information. We do have a consultant engaged. There's some kind of site mapping, if you will, for the lack of a better term. We'll make sure you get all that information. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our, our Neighborhood Association, NORATN, to my knowledge, is aware of the efforts to date, so I appreciate being included, and I look forward to Mr. Powell, since everyone speaks so highly of his work.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Steve Bean, and then Terry Ryan.
Mr. Bean, good to see you, sir. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good to see you. Steve Bean, 1101 Pine. That address should sound familiar. I am currently the Chair of the Leon Democratic Environmental Caucus, but I'm also a member of Tally 100, and I'm here speaking on behalf of Tally 100 about the green building policy. Of course, Tally 100 supports the green building policy, and we urge you to adopt it. We have been meeting recently with the city's Clean Energy Manager, Mike Olson, brainstorming about things the city can do right now to improve our global emission, our greenhouse emission situation, and get, make progress on the path toward our goal of 100% clean renewable energy, and agreeing building policy is a prime target for immediate steps. In the, in the short term, of course, buildings are more efficient, we're going to be burning less natural gas, which is going to be helping our emissions profile immediately, and as we convert to more and more solar, more efficient buildings will mean less need for spending money on land for solar farms, spending money on solar panels, because the less energy we use, the less we need to produce. So obviously, it's, it's a good idea. As far as cost, other people have talked about how green building is not significantly different in cost from traditional building, but I wanted to add to that important fact, something that the city's Alternate Energy Manager, Ben Cowart, mentioned in a meeting recently, which is that it's a lot cheaper to build green in the first place than to go back later and try and retrofit a building that wasn't built green. So that's another reason why this is a great policy. We want to urge you and the city, as you implement this policy, assuming it's adopted, to be ambitious. Where there's an ambiguity, oh, well, we can be this much more efficient, or that much more efficient, let's go big. Well, we can consider this building to be within the policy or not, unless there's a really important reason not to include the building. Make it as broad and as ambitious as possible.
You have about 30 seconds.
We also want the city to be working on a green building code. Energy efficiency is important, not just in city buildings, but in all buildings, and that should be the next step. So that's what we, that's what we want you to be looking at next. But keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Bean. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Next speaker is Terry Ryan, on Item 1305, followed by Sid Bigum.
Great. Mr. Ryan, thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Clerk, point of clarification.
Yes, sir.
1305 is divided into two different parts, consent orders and also contaminated sites. Do I have three minutes for each of those?
You get three each.
Three for each.
Mr. Mayor, it's a single agenda item.
Oh.
Mr. Ryan, I'm going to give you some leeway. Go ahead with the comments.
Thank you very much. Terry Ryan, co-founder of the Tallahassee Sewage and Wakulla Basin Advocacy Group. We're here talking about the Agenda Item 1305. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, staff, and citizens, the door of transparency is opening. Thank you very much. We appreciate our prior meetings with staff and their staff summary presented. Consent orders are an enforcement action by a regulatory entity and the last step before a lawsuit is entered. In 2008 and '09, major sewage spills and numerous and repeated notice of violations were reported, came from DEP. An enforcement consent order was issued in 2009. Staff summary omits, however, EPA stepping in in 2010 indicating the DEP consent order was not strong enough. An amended consent order was finalized over a year later and resulted in more fines and penalties. Most disturbing, public records show prior city management had confusion on who should sign off on this consent order. No one wanted to. Finally, the Underground Utilities Director was told to do so, again, without any City Commission review or approval. In mid-2020, another amendment occurred, when the city revealed 167 very serious system defects, some 10 years old, were not disclosed to DEP in the prior consent order. Staff omits, in the summary, over $100,000 in fines have been incurred since 2010. Consent orders are costly, and citizens should be aware of them. How many notice of violations have been received since the 2011 consent order? These notices, as previously noted by another speaker, lead to consent orders. In 2011, the city was forced to agree to spend $3 million per year to stop spills. This resulted in an 80% increase in sewage fees, greatly affecting our low-income citizens. Staff failed to mention spills have decreased, at the same time, there's lower average rainfall, but voluminous spills continue at times over $1 billion, I'm sorry, $1 billion gallons per year. In 2018, we had 1.3 million gallons spilled. The graph provided by staff unfortunately greatly minimizes the severity of over 11 million gallons spilled over the last several years. Cost-wise, by EPA sewage treatment cost standards, we have spent approximately $41 million extra since 2010, which could have been used to repair the system. Again, sewage fees increased 80%. Recent sewage bills, a 10,000 gallons spill just a few weeks ago, over 100,000 gallons in 2020, however, still below average rainfall. We continue reviewing exfiltration sewage in the environment. Tests of 40 water bodies show about 80% likely half human sewage, many in the areas the city is not addressing in its INI program. We are now using a company in British Columbia, along with other scientific tests with our group. It is truly disappointing staff will not conduct outside exfiltration studies given past history of our sewage system. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, this information is new to our citizens, and we appreciate you opening the door transparency today. We urge Commissioners to require consent orders to be reviewed and approved by you with quarterly review updates. City Manager Goat has been provided information on a Brevard County ordinance, which requires their city, their commission, approval on all consent orders. Next one.
You're at four minutes? Yeah.
I'm sorry?
We're, we're at four minutes now. How much more time are we looking at, Mr.?
I'll move forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
Next speaker is Sid Bigum, followed by Sean McGlynn.
Mr. Bigum, thank you so much for joining us. Good to see you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Sid Bigum. I'm with Berger Singerman, 313 North Monroe Street. Good afternoon, Commissioners, members of the public. I'm here, I'm here today with Terry Ryan, and I wanted to speak to Item 1305 as well. And first, I just want to say how much we appreciate the efforts of And first, I just want to say how much we appreciate the efforts of staff and this commission and you, Mr. Mayor, to meet with us, to work with us about these, not only the transparency concerns, but how we're addressing the city's wastewater collection transmission system. Thank you very much for your openness, your willingness to speak with us and to work with us on creative solutions for these problems. As you know, we've submitted detailed reports, independently financed, privately financed reports and studies to the city, outlining how rehabilitating the existing wastewater collection transmission system can be done on the most cost-effective basis possible. We've done this with a careful eye towards surface water quality and areas that appear to have negative surface water quality impacts as a result of wastewater contamination from the city's system. We'd like to see the city continue in its robust efforts with the INI study, but we really want to focus on exfiltration and reducing the amount of spills that occur from exfiltration. That includes whether it's caused by rain, or pipe breakages, or equipment failures. There are many different sources. But we want this commission to focus on the most cost-effective steps that can be taken to address rehabilitating our system. And that's why we commissioned the study and provided it to staff. It has been a few months. I know staff is very busy. You all have a lot going on, but we would really like to follow up on that and get the staff's reaction to the report and the data that was submitted. We'd ask, we would like for the commission today to direct staff to review that report and that information, and to speak with us again about that. In addition to working with private citizens, such as our group, we appreciate the city's efforts to open up transparency on these issues. As you know, it's always difficult when utility rates go up, including sewage rates. But by opening transparency and increasing the public's understanding and participation in this process, you're helping yourselves and you're helping the public at the same time by educating them about why it's important for us to spend resources on these problems. So I would simply ask that the commission resolve to have periodic public reports about warning letters, about consent orders, and that the commission direct staff to engage with us further on the reports, the privately financed reports that have been provided, so that we can continue to work hand in hand for a successful and safe and green future for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bigum. Appreciate it. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Sean McGlynn, also on item 1305, and then Jake Keiker.
Mr. McGlynn, good to see you. Excuse me, Dr. McGlynn, good to see you. Your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. I'm Dr. Sean McGlynn. I'm on the Board of Directors of the Florida Lake Management Society. I'm on the Board of Directors of the Florida Water Resource Committee, and I'm on the Board of Directors of the Florida Springs Council. I'm a resident, and I was born here in Tallahassee, 568 Beverly Court. I live like two blocks from this building, and we do sit on some of the worst pipes in town. They're mostly clay and iron, and clay pipes have been abandoned in the '50s. They've been phased out. I believe 40% of our pipes are made of clay, and they don't seal, they leak, even if they're in perfect shape. And that consent order was dealing with a lot of infiltration, exfiltration. That's what's causing it. And I applaud the city for fixing them. And they dug up all of College Avenue for months, and in Franklin Boulevard was one clay pipe from one end to the other. And by changing that, that's cleaned up so much going into Cascade Park, and we've accomplished so much, but we have a long way to go. And not only do these clay pipes leak sewage, exfiltrate, when it's wet and there's a lot of water around, they infiltrate and suck water in when it's dry, and they are responsible for many of our lakes. I'm going to try to prove that. I'm a member of Terry's research group, and we're working on this. We're finding that many of the lakes are actually being drained by pipes and not sinkholes around them, and that's why they don't go all the way dry, like Lake Jackson did. It was classic, went completely dry into a hole, and there was no water. Most of them just sit at a very low level, that's, I believe, is at the level of the sewage pipes. And that's because they're all clay pipes around those lakes. And soon we'll replace them, and I hope that we speed that up, and we'll keep studying this. And we're really lucky that we're living with the world's largest spring, and we're in the middle of the Wakulla Springs Shed, but that means that we have to be much more careful with our wastewater. We don't have agriculture. We can't blame it on sugarcane. You know, this is all us. This is fertilizer, this is sewage leaks, this is exfiltration, infiltration, leaky pipes, it's the whole thing. And it's not just on the south side or the north side, it's everywhere, and it's right under our feet, right here. We could dig up under here, you'd find clay pipes. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker, please.
Next is Jake Keiker on item 1308, and then we'll move to our two speakers via WebEx.
Mr. Keiker, thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Jake Keiker, 222 Oakland Avenue. Here tonight is Representative TLH Arts, Inc. Really just to answer any questions y'all may have during the actual policy discussion, we don't have a presentation. We greatly appreciate y'all's time, both on the half of the CRA that was approved, our prior proposal, along with the county. We also want to send a special thank you to Attorney Norvell and Mr. Wayne Teter, who worked with us diligently behind the scenes even prior to the last CRA meeting, to continue moving the ball even before we got to this last stage. But again, I'll be here to answer any questions, address any concerns, and we thank you again for your time and consideration, and look forward to bringing a great project before you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker, please.
Our next speaker will be John Outland, connected via WebEx, and then Robin Dunlap. I do see Mr. Outland's name, so I believe he's connected.
Yes, I am. And thank you so much. I'm not going to repeat some of the comments that were made by Mr. Ryan, Sean McGlynn, and Sidney. But I do want to thank Ms. Marshall. She has, since she's been on board as the new Underground Utilities Director, she inherited a lot of problems, decades-old problems that she has dealt with as best as she can at this point. She needs some additional funding. Blueprint would be a good start to move some of these projects forward as quickly as possible. I'll tell you, just one little bit of history, is that back in 2014, there was over a 500,000-gallon sewage spill, raw sewage spills, on Williams Road out of Pump Station 74, I believe. It went into Upper Lake Lafayette, which we all know now is filled with sinkholes, and actually, the wastewater eventually got found its way to the sinkhole and eventually into Wakulla Springs. We know the connection now exists. So we need to stop these activities, these spills, and the only way to do it is to fix, as Sean had mentioned, the exfiltration and infiltration. And I would hope you would recognize that these issues are over 10 years old and older, and we need to fix them sooner rather than later, and the appropriate funds, funding source needs to be found. And then I'll end up with just also support, all of the comments about the consent orders, warning letters, and enforcement actions, they should be made public, you should be aware of them, and they should be on the agenda when they occur and they're received. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, our next speaker, please. Next speaker is Robin Dunlap.
Hi, my name is Robin Dunlap, 1242 North Suval. I'm speaking on 1302 specifically about the Valencia Group. I am an event planner by trade for a lot of corporations. I've worked for Amazon, and Apple, and Google, and I've just got to say, in my profession, there is no better group than Valencia. We all know it. It holds a very, very, very weighty cachet to have a Valencia Group property in a city, and so I'm really excited that we could potentially have one in our backyard. We've, I've extensively worked in San Jose and Austin, and I think that you guys would, it would really up-level what we're trying to do and kind of the next steps and the strategic plan of Tallahassee. So very much has my support, and I'll be the first one in the pool.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
Mayor, that's the last speaker I have. I don't have any others in person, nor did I have any others register online, so I believe that concludes.
Excellent. Let's check one more time. Commissioner Porter, do you have a strong connection?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Excellent, thank you. Glad you could be here with us, virtually. We're now on the consent agenda. Any items have been pulled off consent, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. 9.04 has been pulled at the request of Commissioner Porter.
All righty. For the rest of the consent agenda, is there any action? It's been probably moved by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. See no further discussion. All those in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
The consent agenda passes four to one. Or Commissioner Porter, was that in the affirmative or the negative? I apologize.
Oh, in the affirmative.
Thank you. So correction, passes five zero unanimously. We are now on item 10.01. Mr. Manager, to introduce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 10.01 seeks authorization to negotiate and execute a sole-source agreement with Vector Airport Systems LLC for an automatic aircraft landing fee collection system. This is sponsored by David Pollard, our Director of Aviation. David's here to answer any questions you might have on this item.
Excellent, thank you. Commissioner Porter, you are the one that pulled the item. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just hoping for, I did correspond with the city manager about this. So what have we been doing so far as far as collecting these fees? Do we know what percentage of these fees we've been collecting on an annual basis?
Mr. Pollard, thanks for joining us.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, appointed officials, and thank you, Commissioner Porter, for the question. From the standpoint of what we've been doing, what we're currently doing now is a manual process, both airport staff working on the collection of commercial landing fees, and then Millionaire on our behalf, collecting landing fees on the part of general aviation. Year-to-date, this fiscal year-to-date, general aviation landing fees represent 3.1% of our airline, or our landing fee revenues, but GA represents 49% of our aircraft operations. And so what we're trying to do is take advantage of the technology that's there with this system that provides a complete turnkey, full-service solution for us to capture the landing fees of all aircraft. We're going to set the threshold, we propose to set the threshold at aircraft that are 6,000 pounds maximum landed weight or greater. And what that would effectively do is exclude a lot of the recreational pilots and set that threshold more at the appropriate level for business aviation and those aircraft that are operating on that side of the field. A recent report done by Florida Department of Transportation, just in our pavement alone, recommends over $50 million worth of pavement rehabilitation. And so as an enterprise fund for the city, and to meet those FAA and FDOT requirements that we're required to meet, and that they've certainly expressed their desire that we start pursuing those more aggressively, we're proposing these fees that help us focus on cost recovery of those improvements that we need to make to our pavements out there.
Commissioner Porter, you have the floor.
Thank you. So I guess I'm having trouble understanding how this adds up, and, you know, because if we are projecting for fiscal year 2021 for the landing fee revenues to be $45,520, and in the past couple of years, it hasn't gone over $35,000, how are we going to be making up this $1.4 million investment? You know, even if we generate $50,000 a year consistently, I'm just not sure how it adds up for me. So are we expecting to generate that much more that we haven't been recovering?
Mr. Pollard?
Yes, the answer to that question is yes. With the system, it will capture more aircraft activity and operations that are occurring at the airport that have not historically been assessed the landing fees. That's one of the primary goals here, is to increase our overall revenues, again, to take care of those needs, those airfield needs that we have out there, to take care of everything. So yes, the current projections are much lower, and that's what the system will do for us. It will bring in those additional revenues by focusing on that threshold, the 6,000 pounds or greater, it'll focus on that threshold. And then with an over 99% level of accuracy, this system will capture those aircraft movements that are occurring on our airport. And so that's a very impressive capture rate that we know is not being achieved currently at our airport.
Commissioner Porter, you have the floor.
Okay, and final question. Thank you. Final question. So could you give me a ballpark figure of what amount of revenue we're looking at if we're capturing 99% of landing fees for one year?
If the question is for one year, so in the agenda item, we put over a five-year period, it would capture 1.418 million. For one-year period, it would capture approximately $297,036 for fiscal year '22.
Okay, thank you. No more questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Pollard. I appreciate you bringing this to us today, and I see what you're trying to accomplish. My concern is, I think back to things like the business licensing fee, where we end up spending, you know, we're paying vendors, we're spending more money to collect revenue, and we're essentially spending more money to pass that bill on to the end consumer. I worry about raising costs on any of our pilots at our airport right now. I think we are in a transition period as we look to take our airport to the next level, but I don't think we're at a time where we need to charge additional fees to be landing at our airport. I think the revenue we're, have been generating and the investments we have made so far are adequate, so I don't think we need to move forward with this vendor today.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams Cox, and then Commissioner Richardson.
Move acceptance and staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been probably moved by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Comments, Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, I'm going to respectfully disagree with Commissioner Matlow. I mean, I think it's been made clear here today that this is an enterprise fund. There are certainly documented repairs and changes that need to be made at the airport, and that has to come from somewhere. And if it doesn't come from additional fees on people that can afford to fly airplanes in and out of our airport, then that has to come out of our general fund. And certainly, we're not going to reduce services to our citizens to take care of what has been identified as needs at our airport. And so I think this is the appropriate step to take, is to look at increasing those fees. We do it for water and wastewater, we do it for sewer. We're doing a sewage rate study currently to determine the appropriate rates for our sewer costs. And so certainly, I think this is the appropriate way to do it. It's an efficient way to do it, and it will be one that will, I think, be fair to everybody, because it won't be subject to subjective evaluation on the part of individuals, but will be an electronic means for being able to capture those fees and add to the enterprise fund at the airport. So I certainly support this item, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Motion on the table by Commissioner Williams Cox is for staff recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. See no further comment. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
And it passes three-two with Commissioner Porter and Commissioner Matlow in dissent. Thank you, David. Appreciate it. Do we have any other items on the consent agenda?
No, sir.
All right, we're on item number 11.01. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. We have several appointments before you tonight. This first one, item 1101, asks, recommended action is for the city commission to appoint Gabrielle Gabrielli to the Joint City-County Bicycling Work Group. Approval includes a waiver- Approval includes a waiver, uh, required by the fact that the appointee does business or could do business in the future with the city. I'll note that that business is with the city, but it's not related to the matters that would be, um, addressed by the, the work group, so it's brought to you as a, um, waiver that's required by policy, not, um, a specific conflict noted.
Excellent. Colleagues?
Move option one?
Second.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox for the recommended option number one, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? See none. All those in favor of action, uh, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Passes unanimously, five zero. Item number 11.02, Mr. Clerk?
Item 1102 is related to the Leon, Tallahassee Leon County Planning Commission. Uh, Rod McQueen has been selected by the Leon County School Board as their appointee to the Planning Commission. The process requires approval or confirmation by both the county and the city of that school board appointment, so, um, Rod McQueen is here for your confirmation of his appointment by the Leon County School Board.
Excellent.
Move acceptance of his confirmation?
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox. Is there a second to the motion on the table?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? See none. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Item number 11.03, Mr. Who's handling? Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, this item, uh, concerns the Florida League of Cities Board of Directors, uh, nominating committee. Uh, the city of Tallahassee occupies a seat on the Board of Directors, um, as one of the most populous cities in Florida. This item requests that you, as the City Commission, select, um, one among you to continue serving or to serve on the Board of Directors for another year. I will point out that the mayor currently serves in that role and is interested in continuing to do so, and we'll give it to you for action.
Thank you. Madam Attorney, real quickly, as you know, since I have been elected, I have had a working relationship with the Florida League of Cities. Do I have a conflict of interest participating in this vote?
No, you do not, by virtue of the fact that this would be, uh, a position that would be by virtue of your service on this commission, and there is no personal benefit to you.
Well, and, and it's not a paid position as well. Um, and colleagues, obviously, the League of Cities knows that I have a working relationship. I have for 16 years, and they still have invited me to serve on the Board of Directors, and I would love to continue serving representing you as well.
Move acceptance of the recommendation?
Thank you, Commissioner Williams Cox.
Second.
Uh, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? See none. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Item number 11.04, Mr. Clerk?
Thank you again, Mayor. Item 1104 is an appointment to the Downtown Improvement Authority. Uh, previous member of that, uh, of the Downtown Improvement Authority, Cheryl Jackson, uh, had to resign in June of this year. Staff is recommending Ms. Patricia Swain to fill this seat. She would complete Ms. Jackson's term, and then would be eligible to serve two full terms at, uh, at the end of that time.
Commissioner Matlow is our rep- representative, you're recognized?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and thank you to, uh, Ms. Swain for volunteering to serve. I, I'd like to make a motion that we, um, appoint, uh, Patricia Swain to the empty seat.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Matlow, is seconded to, seconded by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox. See no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those, all those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Thank you. Item number 11.05, Mr. Clerk?
This item is the, item 1105 is environmental board appointment. It's the last of the appointments on your agenda for tonight. Uh, the environmental board, uh, the mayor respectfully requests the City Commission's, uh, consideration of appointing the following, uh, Ashley Lacy to fill a vacancy that currently exists in seat seven. This would be a first term for, uh, Ashley Lacy.
Excellent. Commissioners?
Move acceptance of the appointment?
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Matlow. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Passes unanimously, five zero. Do we have any other appointments coming before the board at this time?
No, sir.
Madam Attorney, do we have any introduction of ordinances today?
No, we do not.
All right, colleagues, we're on policy formation and direction. It is 4:19. We will get through as much as we possibly can. Uh, we do have a public hearing scheduled at 5 o'clock, so we will need to come to a full stop for the public hearing, and then we'll evaluate from there whether you want to take a small, uh, break, and then come back to, um, uh, the policy formation direction, or just keep moving through. So with that, we are on item number 13.01. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, item 13.01 seeks your authorization for an exception to City Commission Policy 610, uh, and specifically the waiver of fees of $2,609.57. Uh, this would be for the Soul of the Southside Arts and Humanities Festival, which was very successfully held, uh, last, uh, in May, uh, from the 20th to the 22nd at Anita Favors Plaza. Uh, I received a request from the event organizer, Kristique Henry, who led that event and did a great job, and, and she requested, this is the inaugural event, and she has requested that the city waive the fees, again totaling approximately $2,600 associated with that event. Uh, it does fall outside of your policy. Uh, you have a special events policy committee that determines, uh, events that would be eligible. Uh, this is a relatively unique circumstance, and staff is recommending that you authorize the exception, again, for the waiving of fees of about $2,600.
Excellent, thank you very much. Comment, Commissioner Williams Cox?
I move, um, option one.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? See none. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Item number 13.02, Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna tee this one up and ask, uh, Mr. Culverhouse, who's our, our real estate director, to come forward to share some background on this. Um, this particular item seeks your approval to sell the Chevron and John's parcels, you heard about that earlier in public testimony, to the Valencia Hotel Group for $8 million. Uh, these are two separate parcels that total approximately, uh, five acres. Uh, we have received an unsolicited offer on this that, um, meets market value with a good quality, um, project. I would like to acknowledge that, um, Mr. Doyle Graham, the CEO of the Valencia Group is in attendance. He is joined by some of his executive leadership team, John Keeling, Roy Kretschmer, and David Miller. They're also joined by, uh, Ben Wilkinson, uh, he, their local brokerage rep that has been working with them for some time, looking for hotel sites in Florida and, and Tallahassee. And so, I think it's important to provide a little procedural background, and Mr. Culverhouse can provide that, uh, information to us.
Great, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. Uh, with this agenda item, staff is seeking commission approval to sell the city property to Valencia Development for the construction of two hotels with associated restaurant and meeting space accommodations. In 2019, the commission authorized staff to release a request for proposals for the sale of the Chevron and John's block. Unfortunately, due to certain occurrences last year, the, uh, RFP was not released as planned. Um, now, the, the property itself, from, uh, we had a report, an appraisal report, from an independence, independent appraiser in 2015, that valued the property at approximately $30 a square foot, which would be 6.7 million in whole dollars. Uh, staff has kept up with the various sales along the Gaines Street corridor and in the downtown area, and we have estimated the value to be now at about $35 a square foot, which would be in the 7.7 to 7.8 million range. In the meantime, as the manager suggested, uh, Valencia Development has submitted an unsolicited offer to purchase the property for 8 million. As proposed, the transaction will be broken into two phases. Phase one will include the John's parcel for $4 million. The buyers will have the typical due diligence periods and inspection periods prior to closing, and then we'll move on to, uh, construction of phase one. After the construction of phase one, or after we receive the certificate of occupancy for phase one, phase two will begin. Phase two will include the Chevron block for $4 million, and again, the buyer will have a shorter due diligence period prior to closing. This, uh, proposal has been reviewed and approved by the Real Estate Committee, subject to the buyer providing information demonstrating their financial ability to complete the acquisition and proposed development. In addition, the committee requested that the purchase and sale agreement contain written assurances that the buyer will develop the property as they have intended in their letter of intent. Staff is recommending option one and request approval to move forward with the sale to Valencia without competitive bid. Option one also requests a deviation from the real estate policy requirement for a second appraisal. Given our current appraisal, as well as our staff in-house estimates, um, and that the current estimate exceeds that value range, we don't believe the second appraisal is necessary. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Excellent, and I know we have, uh, the representatives of the Valencia Hotel Group that are here. Thank you for joining us, and I know that you'll be available for questions as well. Let's open it up for discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Commissioner Matlow?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first off, um, thank you to, uh, Valencia Group for taking interest in, um, our downtown. I think, you know, Tallahassee is a great place, um, to do business. Um, however, I have concerns, um, about doing business outside of our standing policy, uh, Mr. City Manager. Um, it's, um, anytime we have surplus land, it's, it's been the policy to put it out for competitive bid and to get, um, two appraisals. That protects us, and that protects our community to make sure they get the, the best value for the property, and also, um, make sure so we have a fair and open process for everybody, um, to apply. We have, we have standing board direction to, uh, uh, release a request for proposal, um, from a year and a half ago. I suggest we move forward with that request for proposal, um, so we can have the competitive process, um, you know, that wouldn't preclude, um, Valencia Group from proposing this, but that would give us time to, um, follow our policy. I'm not sure, um, what our process is for bringing items to the commission outside of standing policy, but it doesn't seem that, um, a request from a buyer should override policy and have an item come before this board and ask for us to override our policy without that direction coming, um, from this board, um, in, in a public meeting. So, um, it wouldn't require a motion, um, to proceed with standing board direction, which is to release the request for proposal, so I'm not going to make a motion, but I won't support, um, moving forward with this item today.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Commissioner Richardson?
I would, uh, move option number one.
Second.
As recommended by staff, uh, Mr. Mayor?
Second.
Uh, recommendation for option number one has been moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox, followed by comments by Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, uh, had a very lengthy conversation with representatives from Valencia on yesterday, uh, and I think that, uh, what's being proposed here, uh, certainly helps us to accomplish our dream of an 18-hour downtown in Tallahassee. It's been something that we have worked on and worked towards for years. Uh, and this hotel development, uh, I believe will help us do that in the downtown area. Not only will it help us achieve that 18-hour downtown, but it will also provide jobs for local residents. Uh, and in my conversation, uh, they made a commitment to those not being minimum wage jobs, uh, but high-income jobs, uh, that they will be involved in the community, supporting our schools and our nonprofit organizations, that they will commit to, uh, small women and minority-owned business participation, uh, not only in the construction of the facility, uh, but also in ongoing contracts, uh, for services. The facility will be tailored to Tallahassee. It won't be a cookie cutter model, uh, that will look like every other Valencia hotel from throughout the country, but would be tailored to, uh, Tallahassee and will fit with our culture, uh, here in Tallahassee and the needs of, of our, our town. And so, um, I think that, that this is gonna be a great addition, uh, to our community, uh, and will add to the community and what we're trying to accomplish, uh, with respect to, in addition, our, uh, expanding our private sector base and creating those private sector jobs, uh, here in our community. And so I strongly support, uh, moving forward, uh, with this recommendation.
Excellent. Uh, Commissioner Williams Cox?
Um, I too join, um, the dean in, um, supporting this, strongly supporting it. The, my, my focus is on jobs. Coming out of a pandemic, we're trying to, um, grow our economy. We're trying to grow smartly here in Tallahassee in the creation of an 18-hour downtown, uh, having jobs that are not minimum wage jobs, uh, to the tune of 175-plus employees and, um, those kinds of things. We're, I, that's, that's where my focus is. To, to have an impact on poverty, you gotta have jobs. You gotta have jobs that are gonna help pay wages to get people up. Uh, as a friend of mine, uh, said to me, you don't get a great offer on your house and then put it on the market. Yeah, so, you know, I, I think that we, we have a great offer. Um, my grandmother taught me, don't look a gifted horse in the mouth. So, um, I'm gonna support this, as, as I've already said, and I'm ready to move forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Porter, I don't wanna leave you out. If you want to provide comment?
Thank you. Um, now, I feel quite torn on this item. It clearly would be, you know, an exciting development to take place, and the thing that, you know, honestly, I really wish that we could have done something with, more with these properties, um, that would provide a direct public benefit. I, I totally support our 18-hour downtown. I support jobs. I just, um, think this could have been a really great amenity for all people to use. Um, so, you know, for that reason, um, you know, I, I'm on the fence about this. I would like to see it go through, um, the process that I believe the commission, before I was on, the commission, um, gave traction to do with, with that. But, um, the, the other question I have is, um, you know, since it seems like we're, we're ready to move forward with this, um, we had a discussion earlier at our budget workshop about the deficiencies fund, and w- w- and we got, if someone could clarify, I mean, where does this leave us moving forward with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, with the, the sale, any sales moving forward?
Mr. Manager?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, if you, Commissioner Porter, if you follow policy for the disposition of these sale dollars, it would not impact the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So by policy to the event, to, in the event that your deficiencies fund, your reserve fund, uh, is deficient, these dollars flow there. Once that fund is satisfied, and, um, as you indicated, we discussed that earlier in a budget workshop, then the dollars flow to your capital projects fund. Of course, the commission can deviate from policy, uh, but all of the things being equal, the policy would direct the dollars first to your deficiencies fund, which right now is short, uh, and then if that is full to your, uh, capital fund, not to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Okay, um, okay. So at, I must have been confused. So at what point, we're, we're, were we never, yeah, let's say our deficiency fund were at the level per policy, it wouldn't be going, we don't have a policy where these public land sales go to affordable housing?
Mr. Manager?
Commissioner Porter, and I can ask for a little help if I'm off-base, but I don't believe I am. Uh, if a property has been designated, you take that action every year, suitable for affordable housing, and that is sold, uh, then those dollars move to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So there's, there's a distinction. If the property is owned and held by the city, the commission takes action every year to designate whether or not they believe, uh, a list of properties are appropriate for affordable housing. That, in that case, the money flows to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. In, in this case, these properties don't meet that standard.
Commissioner Porter?
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Well, I will enthusiastically support the motion on the table. To be able to claim a Valencia Hotel boutique four-star resort-style hotel in downtown Tallahassee, uh, I think is a crown jewel. Uh, anyone, as we heard in public testimony, that has done business with the Valencia Hotel Group knows of their commitment to excellence. This is exciting. When we talk about redevelopment of the downtown core, this is where we start. Literally, they are pad-ready. Right now, they previously had buildings on this particular site, and we have someone interested in purchasing at a very, uh, competitive price, uh, to the city of Tallahassee with the guarantees of building what they are proposing to build, and before the deal is done, ensuring that we have, um, uh, the financial commitment from the developers to do so. Uh, everything is in this package, and I appreciate the hard work, uh, that you and your team have brought to the table. And I want to thank the Valencia Hotel Group. This is a $125 million investment in downtown Tallahassee that is gonna create, um, I believe about 225, 230 permanent jobs. I can tell you that the university community is thrilled about this, the business community is thrilled about this, the association community is thrilled about this. Just a couple of months ago, we had a discussion, are we moving forward with the convention center? Are we not moving Are we not moving forward with the convention center? And now to have the Valencia Hotel Group coming to Tallahassee, providing necessary meeting space as part of this development, you are helping us accomplish our goals. I look forward to working with you. Let me officially welcome you to Tallahassee. Motion's been properly made, yes, sir. Commissioner Matlow.
Sorry, just a follow-up there. Mr. City Manager, I see that there was a letter sent by Valencia to you directly for this proposal, but I also see that there's a 6% brokerage fee. Is that the seller's agent? Is that the buyer's agent? Who would be receiving a 6%?
Good question. Mr. Manager, could you walk us through the brokerage fees?
Yes, sir, I will. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what's proposed in the purchase and sale agreement is a 6% payment to the transactional broker. That transactional broker is TLG. They work on behalf of, in this case, the Hotel Group. They do not work on the city's behalf, and it would be customary for the seller to pay that. The 6% is standard. It is the normal, could be higher. We've experienced it lower in the past, but it is well within reason and customary.
Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, and I think these fees can be all over the place. I think customary would be seller's agent and a buyer's agent maybe doing a split commission. It's just a bit confusing how this is presented when there's a letter directly from the buyer to the city and where a brokerage firm comes in at all, especially without a competitive process to let other real estate agents, you know, solicit proposals and bring other buyers in competition to the table. You know, simply put, I can't support this because it's not good policy to sell $8 million in public land without a competitive process. It may be a great project. I think it is a great project. I think in a competitive bid process, Valencia Group would most likely win that process, but I don't see any reason, when we're looking at 360 days to close, why we can't do this process the way policy spells out and still close within 360 days. So again, thank you for your interest in Tallahassee. It's nothing personal. It's just not the way we should be doing business in the city of Tallahassee. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Appreciate it, Commissioner Matlow. And correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding Tallahassee Land Group has actually represented Valencia for years in Tallahassee and in North Florida with their real estate deals, so it's not as if they have just come to the table recently, but yet have been engaged with the Hotel Group actually for several years. And in fact, I believe a couple of years ago, before any of us were elected, there was a conversation that took place between the Hotel Group and Tallahassee, but it didn't move forward, but here we are now.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, and I think I could probably answer that. Ben is, Ben Wilkinson is the brokerage agent. He has shared with us, and I was pleased to learn that Valencia Group has engaged his firm, TLG, now multiple years ago, I don't know how many, two or three years ago, and they have been exploring our market and markets around us using TLG, which is a Tallahassee firm, to find property on their behalf. We know that Ben brought the group to us, introduced them to us, and they have chosen to make an unsolicited offer, which does happen from time to time, and the commission takes action on some of those. You can issue a competitive selection, or oftentimes, somebody will say, "I'm interested in the property and I'd like to buy it." And so Ben was the facilitator as the transactional broker. That is normal in that role where he's seeking property and land, and that's what's happening in this case.
All right. Motion on the table for staff recommendation made by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Seen no further comment?
Just the reverse, I think, wasn't it?
Correct.
Excuse me. Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Commissioner Porter, you're a nay confirming?
Yes.
Okay. The motion passes 3-2 with Commissioner Matlow and Commissioner Porter in dissent. We are on item number 13.03, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think my work is done on this one. You heard numerous folks at the beginning of the meeting really talk highly about the green building policy. I'd like to thank John Powell and his staff for working on this. I'd like to recognize several groups and individuals. Some of those have talked already, the Big Ben Sierra Club, Sustainable Tallahassee, the League of Women Voters, Mr. Gelhart, who spoke earlier, Mr. Steve Urs, Ms. Calder, who spoke earlier, and Ms. Irwin. They all were participants in the dialogue. It was a very fluid dialogue, and I think we've gotten to a great solution. Specifically, we're seeking your approval to adopt a green building policy which incorporates energy efficiency, sustainability, resilience, health, and wellness standards into city-owned building renovation and new construction projects. This follows your approval of the single-use plastics policy. I believe that might have been the last meeting that you initiated in the spring, and so we're seeking your approval on the green building policy tonight.
Excellent. John Powell, I just want to join in and say thank you for everything you do. I mean, you're an expert in your field, but your level of professionalism and as it's reflected with the public that works with you day in and day out is just fantastic. We appreciate everything that you do, sir. Turn it over for Commissioner Comment, Commissioner Williams Cox.
Move adoption.
Option's been properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox. I will second the motion. Is there any further comment? Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank everybody for their hard work on this, all the neighborhoods and neighborhood advocates and environmental activists that have been engaged as we continue to move our city in new buildings in the right direction. I think we hear lots of suggestions about how we can improve buildings that receive government funding as well. I think we should lean into those and try to encourage everybody to live up to the standards that we want to set as a city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Any further comment? Seen no, none. It's been properly moved staff recommendation by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox, seconded by the mayor. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Passes unanimously 5-0. We are on item number 13.04.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me ask Dr. Kimball Thomas to come forward. We're only going to give him a short period, but we can't miss this opportunity to celebrate the tempo program.
Right.
As you know, the state included in its budget $250,000 for the tempo program. They have seen the value in this program. The nation has seen the value in the program. We've seen it firsthand, and we're asking for approval to execute an agreement with the Department of Juvenile Justice for the $250,000. We have not yet received the contract that was to be attached to your agenda item. We believe we will receive it by the end of this week, and with your approval, this would enable us to execute that. But, Mr. Mayor, I'd love for Dr. Thomas just to, a couple minutes, to talk about really where we are with the program.
Dr. Thomas, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor Daley, Mayor Proton, Matlow, respected commissioners, appointed officials, all of our audience and my colleagues. This legislation, I understand that things does not happen in a vacuum. It's been a great effort. Without your unanimous support, we would not be standing here today even with this legislation. Certainly want to thank our state representatives, Representative Alexander in the House, Senator Osley in the Senate, our legislative team led by Christian Doolin this past session. It just would not have happened without a team effort. And speaking of that team effort, I'd like for my tempo staff who's here with me this evening to stand, Case Manager Washington, Case Manager James, Case Manager McGlamry, Coordinator McPherson. Again, they are, as Delmas Barber is the homelessness departmental outreach boots-on-the-ground for homelessness, they are the boots-on-the-ground for tempo outreach. They make those touches. They do the case management plans. They do the action plans. They get our team, those participants, from point A to point B. And speaking of a participant, Darren, where you stand? We have Darren DeRoche with us. This funding would now help Darren go from leaving high school at 16 years of age, joining tempo at 17, being a part of the largest tempo graduating cohort class of 70 students this past week. It will help him from tempo to TCC to FAMU. Give Darren a hand of applause. And for a baby, and for a baby boomer like myself who was born the year that JFK was elected president, Darren, if you'll turn around and let them see the back of your tempo shirt, we have evolved. We have a QR code now that the kids can just log on to and, of course, go directly to the application. Thank you, Darren. Thank you so much, team. And again, thank all of you for this support. We now are able to put 40 scholarships into hands of tempo participants, 10 into rising high school seniors in our TFL program because of this legislative funding. Thanks to all my colleagues who are able to hire tempo participants that are qualified for their areas, and this is just a wonderful thing. And again, without your unanimous support, this could not be possible, and so I thank all of you. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Williams Cox and Commissioner Richardson.
I would like to also pile on and applaud the tempo effort. The graduation was phenomenal, you know, it's life-changing, and we've had some firsts at graduation the other night. But let me just say this about Dr. Thomas. Recently, my husband found some photos of Dr. Thomas when he was a young principal at Rikers High School when my son was there, and he was doing what he's doing now, he was doing then, impacting the future of young folks, and my son was actually signing his scholarship to go to Tulane, and Dr. Thomas was there in the pictures, making sure he did it right. And so he's doing the same thing now. He's still signing scholarships and making sure you're signing and doing it right. Congratulations, Darren, to our future rattler. Well, I'm going to keep up with you, okay? Right. Thank you.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion to accept the information.
Okay. It's been properly moved staff recommendation by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to congratulate Dr. Thomas for the work that he has done. You know, I have been here from the very beginning, when Dr. Thomas came on board with the tempo program and followed his efforts, going out into the community by himself, going door-to-door and finding these students who, but for his efforts, probably wouldn't be where they are today. And seeing where the tempo program is now and what its bright future certainly will be under his leadership and the work of the staff that he's assembled. I know that, I was in the legislature for eight years, and I know it's not always easy to get those legislative appropriations, and I know that several times when it was passed by the legislature, the governor vetoed the appropriation, but I think that our legislative delegation was able to convince the governor this time around that this was the right thing to do and the right program to support. And so congratulations, Dr. Thomas, on what you have accomplished thus far, and we certainly look forward to bigger and better things in the very near future. And I think this young man is certainly an example of what we can expect, continue to expect, from the tempo program. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And I agree. I thoroughly enjoyed joining Commissioner Williams Cox and Commissioner Richardson at graduation. Fantastic event, and keep up the great work of the man. Good to see you again here in chambers. So with that, seen no further comment. All those in favor of staff recommendation made by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by Commissioner Richardson, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. We are on item number 13.05.
Mr. Mayor, we have about a 10-minute staff presentation.
I tell you, I am concerned that we're not going to have enough time before the 5:00 public hearing to be able to do this. If you have a 10-minute presentation...
Let me...
What's that?
I said, "Let's take a break," so we have time for discussion.
I think we should have time for discussion on the back end of this. So I tell you what...
Mr. Mayor, items 1311 and 1312 are very fast. If you want to try that and take a break?
I was going to suggest even starting at 13.08, or we could do 13.08. Is this, I think we can handle this by 5:00? How about 13.08? Mr. Manager.
Okay. We'll give it a shot. Yes, sir.
To the public, sorry for jumping around. We're trying to find the items that we can, we can deal with before the 5:00 public hearing and maximize the time that we have.
All right. Let me ask Assistant City Manager Tedder to come forward, and I will cue this up. He may have stepped out, but I can handle this one. This seeks your approval of the revised TLH Arts proposal. You're very familiar with it as you also make up the CRA board. The CRA board approved the revised TLH Arts proposal that then traveled to the county commission. The county commission approved it. They did recommend that the city, which is a requisite that a government owned the property that is proposed to be donated in this project, that the city owned the property and the building, as well as they've asked for it to come back to them for final review. This item is before you tonight to either agree with that direction and make the final approval, or provide staff an alternative direction.
Okay. Are we ready to bring this in for a landing and make the final recommendation?
I would move, Mr. Mayor, that we move to accept the recommendation in funding for the TLH Arts project.
Everybody understanding the motion that's on table by Commissioner Richardson? Is there a second to the motion? I will second the motion.
Second.
Okay. I'll give Commissioner Porter the second then. Let's open it up for discussion. Mr. Matlow.
Does that include the conditions in option two?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, do we need to clarify any information here?
Yes, I think you probably need to say that you're approving the revised concept plan according to what the CRA board did as well as the county commission. So that would be, I think, first recommendation. And then the second part to that, we alluded to in the agenda item, that if we move forward with the city owning the building, that you would need to authorize the city manager to execute whatever agreements are necessary with the property owner and TLH Arts to effectuate the recommendations.
Mr. Mayor, I would move staff recommendation on options one and two as outlined by the Assistant City Manager and Interim CRA Director.
That is exactly how I interpreted your original motion, Commissioner Richardson. Commissioner Porter has a second on the motion. We all clear?
Yes.
We're all on the same page?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. Comment, Commissioner Williams Cox.
Actually, it's a question, because I have some concern about taking over the maintenance and operation of what's been offered without inspection, review, or any of that. You know, I don't, I've not seen it. I don't know if anyone else has seen it. I don't want to commit us to something that we have not had an opportunity to evaluate. So, you know, we look just like the CRA board, and, you know, the vote there was 4-1, and I was dissenting, dissenting one, not, nothing against the project, but my vote was against the process. But here we are now with a gift that we have not evaluated yet to determine, you know, the value of the gift, what condition the gift is in, what are we committing to taxpayers' dollars to? Even though it's a gift, there will be a need to spend some money to do something there. So is there a way to caveat this with, subject to some evaluation or inspection of the donated facility?
Mr. Tedder.
Yes, ma'am. So the way the statutes are written is that we cannot use the TDC money until the time that the building is in ownership of the city of Tallahassee or another government agency. What we'll have to do is work with the city attorney's office and craft an agreement to allow that change of ownership for a certain period of time. During that time, there probably needs to be some sort of clawback provision, if you will, and again, the city attorney's office will have to help us craft that. You have to get to the finish line and have a finished product.
Okay. The other part to that is that, does it have to be the city? Could it be the county?
It could be any government entity.
Okay. So my question then still remains, is that a responsibility that we as a city would want to take on depending on what we find? Is that something that, you know, since the county wants it to come back to them, or, and the TDC dollars were a part of, when the county was a part of the CRA, is that something that the county might be interested in receiving the gift?
I think you bring up some very valid concerns. Me personally, I am comfortable, again, with the way how Wayne expressed it before, a single penny of TDC dollars can be spent, we have to be in ownership of the property. In order for us to be in ownership of the property, the attorney's office will take the lead. Look, I get it, it's a gift, but if it's to the detriment of the city owning it...
The Trojan horse was a gift, too.
I, well, that's what I'm saying, is that it is a gift, but if the acceptance of the gift is to the detriment of the city through ownership, I could not imagine that we would move forward, and in fact, that would probably come back before us. And during all of this process, not a penny of the TDC funds would be spent until we are comfortable. But I'll go ahead, and Madam Attorney, if you'll comment, please.
I think what we have to do is take the approach that Wayne talked about. We can place it in our ownership, subject to our later approval, based on an inspection to see what the extent of the repairs might be.
Okay. Now, what Wayne said, what I thought I heard Wayne say, a government ownership. He didn't say it had to be us. He said it had to be government ownership. So I want to be clear on that. He didn't say it had to be the city. So it goes back to my question about whether there's county interest in their ownership. So I just put that out there just because, you know, I want to make sure we're clear on where we're heading. And by no means am I saying that I think that the family who donated it, I'm not saying that there's anything wrong with it. I'm just wanting to say that, you know, you don't buy a car until you kick the tires, you know, find out, you know, what's going on with it. So that's kind of what I'm saying.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the reason I offered the motion was because it was my understanding from the briefings that I've had with the city manager and with the CRA, Interim CRA Director, was that those issues would in fact be worked into the contract, that that would be part of the agreement, that the facility would be inspected, and if there are any issues, that that would be negotiated in the contract with the property owner before we took it over. If I'm correct in that, Mr. City Manager or Madam Attorney?
Yes, sir. That's our intention.
Okay.
Excellent. Any further comment? All right. Motion on table has been properly made by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Porter. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. All right, colleagues, I'm going to go ahead and call for a quick five-minute break. We'll come back at 5:00 for the public hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the order of the public hearing. It is 5:05 in the afternoon. If you mind, please grab in your seats. If we can take the conversation outside, that'd be wonderful. We have one, two, three, four items on the public hearing. Mr. Clark, do we have, well, first of all, excuse me, we're on item number 15.01. Madam Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 15.01 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 21-0-24, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, amending sections 14-1, 1.001, 14-3.02, 14-3.310, and 14-3.317, and creating an Article III, Sections 14-3.400 through 14-3.431 in the Code of General Ordinances of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, relating to police officers' pension benefits and contributions, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and provided an effective date. Recommended action is option one, conduct the first and only public hearing and adopt ordinance number 21-0-24, and amend the pension ordinance for the police officers and investigators to align with the terms of the collective bargaining agreements between the city and the police benevolent association.
Excellent. Mr. Clark, do we have any speakers?
No speakers.
Let's move down the line. Comments, motions?
Move option one.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Matlow, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Seeing no further comment. Commissioner Porter, are you with us?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Item number 15.02. Madam Attorney?
Thank you. Item number 15.02, the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 21-Z-21, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory located on 3.009 acres at 3611 and 3613 Woodville Highway, as an in general commercial C2 from Office Residential OR-2 on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, adopted and established by the city commission, providing for conflicts and severability and provided an effective date. Recommended action is option one, conduct the first and only public hearing and adopt ordinance number 21-Z-21, thereby amending the official zoning map from Office Residential Zoning District to General Commercial Zoning District, based upon the findings of fact, conclusions of law, of the planning commission, and any evidence submitted at the public hearing hereon.
Excellent. Mr. Clark, do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, we do. Luke Strickland. We also have David Theriak, but only here to answer questions.
Great. Mr. Strickland, thanks for joining us. You named the address for the record.
Thank you very much. Luke Strickland, 1000 North Duval, Tallahassee. And I'm really here just to answer any questions that may come up on 15.02.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Theriak, you're here to answer questions as well?
That's correct, sir.
Excellent.
Second?
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson for staff recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Madam Attorney, we're on item number 15.03.
Thank you. Item number 15.03 is the final public hearing and adoption of the 2021 through 2022 HUD Annual Action Plan and Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area Plan. Abena Ajitayo, Director of Housing and Community Resilience, is available to speak on this item if desired.
Excellent. Mr. Clark, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Excellent. Move acceptance? Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox properly moves acceptance of this item, staff recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Passes unanimously, five zero. Item number 15.04. Madam Attorney?
Thank you. Item number 15.04, approval of sale of CRA-owned real property for Frenchtown Quarters and Marketplace. This item seeks city commission approval for the sale of parcels of real property owned by the CRA. State law provides that city commission must approve the sale of CRA-owned real property where the sale is for less than market value. On July 1st, 2021, the CRA board approved community benefit agreement for the development of a project known as Frenchtown Quarters and Marketplace. The agreement includes terms for the sale of six CRA-owned parcels to the developer for $10. The six CRA-owned parcels were purchased by the CRA in 2014 in connection with the relocation of the homeless shelter. The recommended action is option one, conduct the public hearing and approve the sale of CRA-owned real property for Frenchtown Quarters and Marketplace project.
Mr. Clark, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Excellent. Okay. Move acceptance?
Second.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Madam Attorney, do we have anything else come before us at the public hearing?
There are no further public hearings.
All right. That wraps up the public hearing. That will wrap us out of the public hearing, back into general business, and we are on item number 13.05. Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me invite Renetta Curry-Marshall and Alyssa Myers forward. They're our staff experts on this, and they have a full presentation. It provides background as it relates to the consent order that is still active. It is now over 10 years old, but it is only consent order active as it relates to the city. And then an update on those sites that are contaminated. There are a handful of sites owned by the city that are contaminated, but we'll paint a picture broader than that. Over the last 10 years, there's been a lot of history as it relates to managing our wastewater collection system, not so much treatment, that's almost a separate story, but the collection, you've heard a lot about that today. And so we want to share that background. Ms. Marshall will do that, and Alyssa Myers will talk about the contaminated sites.
Welcome. Thank you for all the hard work that you all do.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, appointed officials. I'm Renetta Curry-Marshall, General Manager of Underground Utilities and Public Infrastructure. And joining me, as the City Manager said, is Alyssa Myers, who's the Administrator of the Environmental Regulatory and Compliance Division. So we're going to tag-team this presentation. It includes contaminated sites and an update on consent orders. And this was a request from the Commissioners at a previous meeting. We are going to be mindful of our time and judicious. So just an overview of the agenda. Again, contaminated sites, Alyssa's going to do all the heavy lifting on that, and then we're going to go into consent orders and, of course, leave ample time for questions that the Commissioners may have. So with that, I'm going to ask Alyssa to come to the lector.
Good afternoon. Good to see you, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, appointed officials. Thank you for the opportunity to provide a brief update on contaminated sites. As you know, the city's Environmental Regulatory Compliance Division oversees the cleanup of city-owned contaminated property to ensure compliance, not only with environmental regulations, but the protection of public health and the environment. We also manage the city's brownfields program, which incentivizes property owners to redevelop and clean up their contaminated property by funding environmental assessments and environmental cleanup activities. When we do our cleanups, we comply with the Department of Environmental Protection adopted rules in Chapter 62780, and all of our activities are coordinated with DEP, and records of our activities are on the DEP Public Information Portal. So there are thousands of cleanup sites in Florida, old gas stations, dry cleaners, industrial facilities. There are hundreds in Leon County. The city owns six properties where environmental assessment and cleanup is ongoing. Five of the six are in a cleanup program that's funded and managed by either DEP or by the federal government due to their historical operation as a dry cleaning facility, old gas station, or former military installation. And if you look at the map on the right-hand side, you'll see in blue, those bullets are where active assessment and remediation is ongoing. The ones in green, site rehabilitation is complete, and there is a declaration of restrictive covenant on the property. One of the sites I want to bring, highlight tonight, is the assessment that we have ongoing at the Tallahassee Fire Department Fire Training Facility. And that's due to historic use of a firefighting foam known as A triple F. It contains per and polyfluoral alkyl substances known as PFOA and PFOS. It's currently non-regulated, but an emerging contaminant of concern. We're working on assessment of that, and the city has recently filed suit against A triple F manufacturers for cost recovery. I would be remiss if I didn't highlight our highly acclaimed brownfields program, where we support economic development and environmental stewardship by incentivizing the cleanup and redevelopment of blighted property within our community. The city has funded over 32 projects since the brownfields project's inception, and we have received over $2.3 million in grant funding from EPA for our program. Our revolving loan fund grant has facilitated over $6 million in leveraged funding to the Game Street area. In 2019, we were recognized for this accolade by EPA with an award for greatest dollars leveraged for a city under 200 population. While about 95% of our current EPA assessment grant has been expended, we do have some remaining funds available for assessment of contaminated properties. You know, if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them now and pass it to Ms. Marshall.
So we keep going?
Thank you.
Thank you, Alyssa. Okay. Going to turn now to consent orders. I'm going to squeeze this into hopefully less than 10-minute presentation, and I'm going to be going over basically a 14-year history when you go all the way to the beginning. So just for those that are not aware, consent order is an enforceable action. It is a mutually agreed-to final order, and in this case, from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and it's to resolve findings of environmental violations. Now, this one that we are talking about, and there is one active consent order, it was issued in 2009, later amended in 2011. The consent order was initiated due to sanitary sewer overflows, an increase in sanitary sewer overflows. And basically, an SSO is an occurrence that happens where you have an admittance of wastewater from your collection system. And you always want to try to avoid those. And so we had an increase in those, the city did, in 2007 and 2008. As part of that consent order, there were certain things that were agreed to, certain things that were required, a collection system evaluation and rehab plan. Also in the consent order, it identified penalties, stipulated penalties, that were graduated, depending on the volume and number of spills. And then it required compliance by January 30th of 2022. And there are certain commitments or certain things that the city needed to put in place to make that, and we are on schedule to resolving those issues and be in compliance. As far as the stipulated penalties, since 2009, the city has been issued $150,500 in stipulated penalties over that 12-year period. So just to put this into context, I'm talking about this SSO, I was talking about the collection system. This gives a good overview as far as the collection system for the city of Tallahassee, almost 1,000 miles of gravity main, almost 150 miles of force main, over 100 pump stations. And all of that is there for the specific purpose of collecting and transmitting wastewater to the T.P. Smith Advanced Water Reclamation Facility, where we treat over 16 million gallons, and that's average, of wastewater per day. So out of that, out of that consent order, the city implemented three major programs, three major plans. They included Environmental Management System, a program known as Frog, fats, roots, oils, and grease, then also an inspection and rehabilitation program for our collection system. So just to briefly go over what these different programs are and that are still in place, the Environmental Management System Program, we call it EMS, that is a defined management process and procedures. It's a framework for how we do our work. What is not mentioned on this slide is that that is a certified, a third-party certified program. It's ISO certified 14,000, which is pretty prestigious. It's been in place since 2011, and it's centered on the Plan Due Check Act, and it's a process for continuous improvement. So every time that we have an SSO, we do what is called a PCAN, which is basically, we go and assess, and we do a root cause analysis, because you want to continually get better, and you want to do preventative measures, so you're not there again. The Frog program, I think many of you have probably heard of the Frog program. It's our public outreach and education program, and that is to raise our customers' awareness of proper use of the collection system. I like to say, your toilet is not a trash can. Be mindful. And I put another R in there, because at the initiation of this program, it was focused on fats, rags, oils, I'm sorry, fats, roots, oils, and grease. That other R is for rags. Or as you look there, it says wipes, clog, pipes. There's an oxymoron called flushable wipes. They don't exist. Just saying. Okay. Now, as we start talking about our infrastructure, our collection system inspection, so these are a couple of our team members there. These are actual pictures of them taking full-circuit TV, putting the camera down into the system. Now, this is a proactive measure that was put into place. We inspect 20% of our system per year. It takes us five years. That's about 1,000 linear feet. A million linear feet per year. Our collection system maintenance, which goes hand-in-hand with the inspection program, we clean portions of our collection systems, about 3 million feet per year. And again, this is, we've gone from reactive to preventative. So you're talking about like the frog, so that, the fats, oils, grease, all those things, they cause blockages into our collection system. So we have to make sure that we keep the collection system maintained. And, you know, my folks knew I was giving this presentation, so they wanted me to make sure to tell you that in 2020, there was over 53,000 pounds of debris that we got out of the system, that they got out of the system. So that is a big job, and they're very, very proud about that. Collection system rehab. So we talked about maintenance, we talked about inspection, now we're going to talk about investment, actual investments into the program when it talks about capital improvement on projects. Over the past five years, there's been $48 million invested, and this just is not about what is in the consent order. It goes beyond that. just is not about what is in the consent order. It goes beyond that. So it's just not about clay pipes. It's pump stations that are rehabbed, over 26 miles of our wastewater system that's upgraded and rehabilitated. You could have clay pipes out there that are pristine, and you could have PVC that was put in 10 years ago that needs to get taken care of. So that's part of that whole assessment program. And what's not mentioned on here is resiliency. Resiliency is very, very important. You're going to see a couple of slides later. And I think a previous speaker that we're talking about, the Hazard Mitigation Grants. So when I'm talking about resiliency, I'm talking about outfitting our lift stations with generators, talking about undergrounding what used to be overhead, going underground with that. Those are all very important. As we look at climate, it's changing. So as we go into results, take us back. So the consent order came about in 2009 because of 2007 and 2008. So this is a reduction in our number of sanitary sewer overflows. So in 2008, over 180 of those, specifically 184, to present date, to 2020, there were 20 overflows. 2021 is year-to-date, but there's been four, or three year-to-date. Also looking at not just number, but also looking at volume of SSOs. Again, you can take a look at that, take a look at the diminishing line there. 2008, over 6 million gallons were spilled. Going fast forward here to 2020, 2021, you know, less than 100,000, I'm sorry, 100,000 in 2020, and you can look at the line there for 2021. We would love for it to be zero. We would love for it to be zero, and that's what we're constantly, constantly working on. But things happen. So if you look at 2008, we had a major storm that was Fay. In 2018 was Hermine, and in 2016 was Hermine, and 2018 was Michael. So we talk about spills, and I think I'm going back to FROG, preventative-type spills. The way that you can prevent spills is to do just what those programs have: your maintenance, your rehabilitation, your public education. So in 2008, the majority of our spills were due to FROG. That has nothing to do with rainfall. It has to do with blockages in the system. That has to do with a lack of maintenance, a lack of inspection. So when I say we went from reactive to proactive, look at 2020, and you look at the number of FROG spills relative to all other causes. Those, all of those other causes, maybe a generator has gone out, a contractor has hit the line, what have you, but it's not these things that you think about it and say, "I could have prevented that." Because anytime we have one of these spills that you could prevent, there is like a crew of 50 gentlemen that take it so personally. Continued progress. You just don't rest on that. In 2020, we initiated an INI study, because what you really want to do, there's a limited amount of funding. You want to make sure that that funding goes to the most high-risk areas that it should be targeted to. So we did an INI study. INI stands for inflow and infiltration. There's a general definition there, but basically, that's stormwater that's getting into your system, whether that's through direct connections such as inflow, that could be through your cleanout, you had a cleanout cap that's gone, a roof leader, or it's through infiltration, which is basically groundwater getting into the system through pipe defects or manhole defects. So we prioritized, based on that INI study, identified those highest priority basins that we wanted to target further evaluation. So we started talking about INI and where the city is relative. There's an EPA benchmark, which is 275 gallons per capita per day. That is deemed excessive. The city's flow for one of our more rainy seasons was about 150 gallons per capita per day, so well below that threshold. More continued progress. I talked about the INI study. So what's happening now, what has been initiated, is this field investigation that we're targeting those high priority areas for INI. There's been concern raised as far as exfiltration is concerned. So INI is water getting into, getting into your system. The exfiltration is the water leaving the system. That could do, you could have water quality concerns as far as that, aquifer groundwater quality concerns because of that. But those same defects that you address with the water getting in are the same defects that would exist for exfiltration. So you're addressing that exfiltration issue when you're addressing INI. Systematic programming of rehab and replacement. So looking at this continued progress, we're going to program and have been programming our funds to those most high-risk areas. We're going to continue our surface water and lakes monitoring program. I could do a whole separate presentation as far as that is concerned, but we have a very, very good stormwater utility that monitors on a bi-monthly and on a quarterly basis our freshwater systems that are there. And then last $44 million is projected for us to invest into the system, into the collection system, over the next five years. And out of that $44 million, that includes about $30 million on rehab and replacement projects. I think the operative word here, that is my last slide, and we can certainly go to questions, but I think the operative word here is continued. It's not like you're going to snap the rubber band and say, "Hey, I'm finished." That does not happen. Systems age. You have to constantly care for them. So whether it's the Environmental Management System that is in place, that's part of UUPI's DNA, or whether it is the FROG program, that is our public education program, or whether it is the investment, and I believe the wise investment of our ratepayers' funds into those highest-risk areas, this is a continuum. It's going to keep going. And I kind of hesitate to say this, but I'll go ahead and say this. So I've been in the utility business for almost 40 years. That's the part I do want to say. Worked at over five utilities, have been issued consent orders before. And at the city of Tallahassee, out of the other utilities that I've been, I have never seen people take such pride, and it'd be so ingrained in the city, in the community, when you start talking about SSOs are caring for the system. And I did not want to stand here and not let that be said. And for that, I'll be glad. Does that mean we can get better? You're darn sure. That's part of the whole continuous improvement, and for that, I'll be glad. Does that mean we can get better? You're darn sure. That's part of the whole continuous improvement process. Are we open to ideas? You're darn sure about that. Will we do things in a systematic, science-based, progressive way? You're darn sure. And we rely on the subject matter experts that are within the utility and also outside.
Thank you very much. You do a great job, and you're recognized as one of the best in your field. We appreciate you. Let's open it up for questions and comments. Sure, Commissioner Williams-Cox.
I just, I sit here and smile, because this is serious stuff. You're obviously taking it very seriously, and I love the proactiveness of it as well. And I want to applaud you and your staff, and thank you for the, taking me to school in this process a few weeks ago, and then seeing it here again today. I am just proud to be a part of what you all are doing to keep our city safe. And I know that you will, I've heard some of the public speakers say here tonight, that you guys are, you're doing your very best. Like you say, you want to get it to zero, and it looks like you're headed in the right direction. And so I just want to say thank you for what you all have done, the investment at Ms. Myers and the rest of the team. Thank you all so very much for keeping us safe. Now, if I could just learn to drink more water instead of these things, I'm sure I could help the process even more, and making sure you are also educated, you know, how we should be disposing of grease. You know, I think about that very often now, now that you've educated me. Public education is important. I've also seen a new tap commercial about mulching, you know, I do my yard by cash app and somebody to do it. So I'm hoping that they're bagging and mulching. I'm going to ask how they're taking care, because what I don't want is, I don't want that giant mosquito that you all show in that tap commercial to come and carry me away. So thank you all for the public education and putting it in a way that we can understand it. It makes sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Williams-Cox, there's no suggested action except for to accept the report. Would you like to make the motion?
I move that we accept the report as very well presented.
Excellent. It's been probably moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox and seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Further comment? Mr. Matlow.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation and the in-depth briefing. What I thought was important when I met with you and your staff as we went through all the different events and where we saw spikes, what caused them, and what we did to avoid those situations in the future, and they had an answer for every single one of them, which I really appreciated. We had conversations about exfiltration and the ongoing testing, and I hear we have private testing happening as well, so I believe, you know, we will continue to follow that, continue to follow the research and take action where necessary. But overall, the progress we made since 2008, you could tell a lot of work was done, and this was taken very seriously. The second part of this conversation was just based on when we enter into consent orders and whether those come before the commission. I'm in favor of, luckily, this one's about to wrap up in January 2022, but in the event we enter into any consent orders in the future, it'd be brought to the commission just for review.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Seeing no further comment, the motion on table is to accept the report made by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Commissioner Porter, would you like to comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
I too wanted to say to Renetta and her team, I have total faith in you. I so appreciate your presentation and the meetings that we've had together. And so thank you so much for your diligent work on this matter, as well as the work of many residents who've been keeping us apprised of this. And I do want to just express my desire that in the future, that these things, you know, come before us as well. And I was wondering if you could just, if you could explain, if, do other cities do that that you've worked for with consent orders? Is it something that, in your experience, is brought to commissions or, you know, in the past?
Can you hear me, Commissioner Porter?
Yes.
It varies. It varies per the city, and it's really specific to the specific policies there. And then there's also, there's no one-size-fits-all, because consent orders could be varied as far as their severity is concerned as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Motion on the table to accept the report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Thank you, Renetta. Appreciate it. Item number 13.06, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, with your indulgence, I would like to have staff present 1306 and 1307 combined. They both are updates.
Great. So there's no action items associated with them except for to accept the presentation, correct?
Yes, sir, and they're related in nature in the same staff.
Okay, sounds great. Yes, that'd be wonderful.
Okay, let me turn it over to Jean Amson. She's our Housing Director/Manager. She's going to provide an overview. We thought this overview related to our Inclusionary Housing Ordinance and the process there would be good, the timing would be good, as well as an update on our Affordable Home Construction Loan Program. As you know, you have a joint workshop with the county next week related to homelessness, housing, and the Orange Avenue project in particular. And so we felt like the timing was good. It's been some time since we provided an update, and that's the purpose of these two items. So I'll turn it over to Jean to provide the presentation.
All right. Thank you, City Manager. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners and Appointed Officials. Thank you for the opportunity to present on these two items, both of which advance the city's 2024 strategic plan and are consistent with your impact on poverty priority. The first update is for the city's Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. Adopted in 2005 and amended in 2008, the city's Inclusionary Ordinance implements the housing element of the Tallahassee-Leon County Comprehensive Plan. It requires private sector investment in affordable housing within new large-scale residential developments, and it promotes socio-economic integration by focusing on certain census tracts that are poised for significant growth and where income is higher than the area median. The ordinance requires that residential developments with 50 or more units set aside at least 10% of the units at a price that is affordable for households at or below 100% AMI. That can include, those 10% can be for sale or for rent. In exchange, and by Florida statute, the city provides several design and development incentives, such as density bonuses and water sewer tap fee waivers. The city enters into an agreement with the developer, which defines specific project terms. So far, we have two developments participating. The first is Brush Hill Town Homes at Evening Rose, who joined the program voluntarily. They were the first. They constructed 10 townhomes out of a 67-mixed-unit residential area, and they are rented, they are for rentals, and they are rented at a price that is deemed affordable for a household at or below 100% AMI. All 10 are currently rented. The second, and the bigger one, is the Canopy at Waylani Arch. It's also participating with 67 inclusionary units for sale. All of them are three-bedroom, two-bath, single-family detached units. Due to underperformance, you, the commission, approved an amendment to the original agreement in 2020, significantly improving the accessibility and attractiveness of the project. For two years, only one house sold under the old agreement, but with the amendment, 11 have since been sold or are under contract in the last 12 months. The sales price adjusts annually and is currently $203,000 versus the market rate units at Canopy, which range from $230,000 to about $510,000. The inclusionary housing unit price is affordable for a family of four, earning around 80% AMI. We also offer down payment assistance if they qualify. So there's some pictures of the Waylani Arch. We've engaged with the Tallahassee Lenders Consortium to assist with the marketing and qualifying eligible homebuyers, providing down payment assistance, and linking the eligible buyers with participating lenders, and providing homebuyer education and credit counseling. One important outcome of the ordinance that we'd like to note is the creation of a certain price point that is desirable to market rate developers and popular with buyers. Because of the popularity of the inclusionary housing model, Canopy has sold an additional 29 non-inclusionary units that are selling below the average market rate price compared to other units in the development. So looking to the future of the ordinance, city staff did do some research on IH ordinances either in Florida or around the US to see where it's working well and why. The Leon County Board of County Commissioners is also considering a similar ordinance as part of the future land use element update. And finally, the city's AHAAC is in favor of amending the ordinance with suggested revisions to be made part of the committee's annual report to the commission in December. Staff is requesting that you accept the staff update for this item. And I'll move on into the second, or do you want to go? Okay.
Please.
I will move on. All right, so our Affordable Construction Loan Program, the next update is for this. We're very excited. Last year, actually a year from this month, in July, the commission approved staff to move forward with creating this program. Communities across the country are increasingly recognizing that the spread-out patterns of growth, which have shaped American communities in the past several decades, cannot be sustained. Adding or rehabilitating infill housing on vacant lots makes a residential neighborhood feel vibrant again. This program brings resources for smaller developers to produce much-needed affordable housing, revitalizing local neighborhoods. The Construction Loan Program was authorized by the commission in July 2020 with $1 million in seed funding, $750,000 from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and $250,000 from the CRA. It is available to for-profit and nonprofit developers and contractors with up to $175,000 per project, loaned at half-prime rate and repaid within 18 months. I'm happy to report the program has proven popular and effective. To date, seven applications have been submitted, five are approved, and four of those are under construction, including the city's first 3D-printed home. An additional 18 to 20 applications are in progress. The full $1 million is now obligated. And there's the And there's the locations of them. You can see they're kind of, they're not clustered. They're kind of all around the city. 100% of the successful applicants are women or minority-owned local small businesses. Projects are mainly located in the downtown area with one in South City, two in the CRA Frenchtown District, and of course, the 3D-printed home on Clay Street. Staff is requesting that you accept this staff update. Thank you very much, and I'm here to answer questions.
Excellent. Personal note, I thoroughly enjoy serving on the Affordable Housing Committee of the city and enjoy working with the team. Y'all do great work.
Thank you, sir.
Let's open it up for any questions. The recommended action is to accept the reports.
So moved.
Properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five-zero.
Thank you.
We are on, thank you. We are on item number 13.09. Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me invite Angela Baldwin, our Director of Star Metro Ford and our consultant that's worked on this matter. This agenda item before you is the major update to the 2022 to 2031 Transit Development Plan. It is a forward-looking plan. This is done periodically to identify priorities over a 10-year horizon. We are seeking your approval of that plan. As I mentioned, we have hired an outside consultant, an expert, to take a look. The plan is well put together. It's very thorough. And I'd like to ask Angela to introduce the consultant for a very brief presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mayor. I'd like to take an opportunity to introduce Laura Everett. She is the Transit and Rail Planning Manager for VHB. VHB, in conjunction with Nelson Nygaard and Tool Design, have prepared this transit development plan for you. And she'll take just two minutes to provide a brief overview.
Thank you for joining us. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners, City Manager. Appreciate it. The Transit Development Plan is a 10-year, needs-based plan that Star Metro has required by state statute to update every five years. The current update is due to the Florida Department of Transportation on September 1st. So we are seeking adoption of the plan this evening. I just want to note for clarity that adoption of the plan does not obligate any funding. That would still go through the normal budgeting process. So to prepare the TDP, we followed a robust public involvement plan and engaged hundreds of community members through stakeholder interviews, surveys, public meetings, all despite the pandemic. And what we heard was that your services, Star Metro's services, are very well received in the community. The riding public likes what they've got, and they just want more of it. They want greater frequency on routes. They want to see later evening service. That's all great news. Star Metro is also, we heard a lot about them being a valued partner to other organizations in the community. And as someone who works with a lot of transit agencies across the southeast, I can tell you that's not always the case, so that's great news for Star Metro. Kudos to them. And so, with that public engagement, we built a number of improvements or alternatives that we evaluated. Those potential improvements included improvements to services, infrastructure, technology, plans, and policies. We put them through a robust evaluation process, which was based on how well each of those improvements supported the seven goals in the city's strategic plan. So whether an improvement supported economic development or impact on poverty, et cetera. And we used that evaluation to build the TDP. So again, the TDP is before you for adoption this evening. You will continue to see the consultant team out in the community as we are doing the comprehensive operations analysis at the same time as well. And so, we'll be doing more public outreach, including an onboard survey. But with that, I'll defer.
Hey, thanks. Appreciate it. All right, let's open it up. Questions, comments, adoption? It's been properly moved by Commissioner Matlow, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. You did so well, there are no questions or comments. So all those in favor of adopting the plan signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Passes unanimously, five-zero. Thank you very much. We are on item number 13.10. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, as you know, Mayor Commissioners, throughout the city, including the Tallahassee Police Department, we actively seek grants to supplement resources to support programs that improve operations, in this case, public safety. TPD was made aware of three competitive grant opportunities available from the U.S. Department of Justice, the DOJ, that fit this criteria in this goal. We are seeking approval to apply, accept, and expend grant proceeds from the U.S. Department of Justice in support of the expansion of the city's crisis intervention team, the provision of additional de-escalation training and associated costs, and the expansion and enhancement of the department's body-worn camera system. Chief Revel is here to answer any questions you may have on this item.
Excellent. Let's open it up for discussion and direction.
Move staff recommendation on option number one.
Second. Option one's been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox. Any further comment? Mayor?
I just want to commend the chief on his aggressively seeking these types of outside funds
Agree.
for necessary equipment and upgrades because, but for that, it would have to come out of our general revenue fund. And so, in that regard, you're saving the taxpayers of the City of Tallahassee dollars in that respect. And so, I want to commend you and your staff on that.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of them?
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five-zero. Thank you, Chief. We're on item number 13.11.
Thank you, sir. This item proposes revisions to the city's rules and regulations for backflow prevention and cross-connection in our potable water system. This was last updated in 2015, and it's necessary to periodically review the rules and update them. The revisions include expanding the city's coordinated testing services to commercial customers. Currently, this service is only available to residential customers and has been quite successful since its introduction. In addition, the city would have the ability to remedy known hazards within the city's public water system that have gone unrepaired and replace backflow assemblies as necessary. Lastly, the language includes improved enforcement procedures for those individuals that work on backflow preventers that currently is not in accordance with Florida statutes. Dave Roberts, our Water Quality Director, he's here to answer any questions you have on this item.
Excellent. All right. Questions, comments, direction? It's been properly moved by Commissioner Matlow.
Mr. Mayor.
Just a second, please. Are you seconding the motion, Commissioner Porter?
I will second the motion, but I do have a question.
Okay. It's been properly moved by Commissioner Matlow, seconded by Commissioner Porter. Commissioner Porter, you are recognized for comment questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question about the cost, the potential cost increases for customers' water utility bills? If we have an idea of how much that increase will be?
David?
Sure. Thank you, Commissioners, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. City Manager. Commissioner Porter, there's no expected increase to our customers as a base in this regard. The cost for testing assemblies belongs to the property owners and the owners of the assemblies themselves. When we have to get involved to provide testing, either at the customer's option or as a mechanism of enforcement, we then in turn bill that customer specifically for those charges.
Okay. Okay, thank you so much for clarifying.
Excellent. Mr. Roberts, we don't get to see you on a day-to-day basis. I want you to know how much we appreciate you and everything you and your team does for the city and for the community. Y'all do great work.
Thank you very much.
There's a motion on the table for staff recommendation made by Commissioner Matlow, seconded by Commissioner Porter. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five-zero. We are on item number 13.12. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, sir. This is our last policy item.
Don't jinx it.
No more scheduled policy items. Star Metro is seeking approval of their Title VI Plan for fiscal years 2022 through 2024. The Federal Transit Administration, also known as FTA, requires transit agencies to review and update these policies every three years. And so, we're at that point. Staff, similar to the previous item, conducted community outreach over the spring of 2019 and surveys up into the spring of 2021. This information was used to inform the proposed policy, and we're seeking your approval on Title VI policy in submission to the FTA. Angela Baldwin is still with us. She's here to answer any questions you may have.
Ms. Baldwin, same goes for you. You do an absolutely amazing job with our mass transit. We certainly do appreciate it. Thank you, and thanks for being available for any questions that might come up.
Move option number one, Mr. Mayor.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson for staff recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox for comment. Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I couldn't let this go forward without making this comment. You know, it was desegregation of our bus system, transit system in Tallahassee that started the process of desegregation in the City of Tallahassee. And here it is, these many years forward, and that same transit system is directed by an African-American female. That's not lost on this community, Angela, and we appreciate you for the work that you do in making that system efficient and effective for all of Tallahassee citizens, regardless of where they sit when they get on the bus. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no further comments, been properly moved for staff recommendation made by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five-zero. Mr. Manager, do we have any other business to come before us during policy formation and direction?
No, sir.
Excellent. We're on un-agenda business speakers. Mr. Clark, do we have any un-agenda business speakers?
Mayor, we have one speaker tonight, Shelby Green. And she's familiar with our processes.
Great.
Three minutes for your remarks and...
Mr. Mayor, as Shelby comes forward, let me just publicly congratulate her. I think she had a name change recently.
Yeah.
Okay.
And just back from vacation.
Wonderful.
Congratulations.
Sure. We keep up with you on Twitter.
Ms. Green, your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Shelby Green, and my address is 519 Ingleside Avenue. And I'd also like to say thank you guys for congratulating me on my new marriage. I really appreciate that. So, probably to no surprise to you all, I'm here to talk about the utility disconnect issue. But before that, I did want to express my thanks to all of you for quickly mobilizing the crew workers to respond to Tropical Storm Elsa and for being on standby to correct power outages that were caused by utility poles snapping and trees. And as a quick refresher, at the last city commission meeting, I asked the city to resume its former practice of printing the disconnection date on utility bills. To follow up on that request, I sent an email to you all with attachments showing two past due bills from January 2017 and June 2020. Initially, I didn't receive an answer, and when I spoke to a commissioner about why the practice was stopped, I was told that by addressing me asking to print disconnection dates along with debt relief options on utility bills, it's not enough to sway the will of the commission. So I took the commissioner's advice and posted a petition to ask the city to do two things. One is to print the disconnection date on all utility bills, and two, to print utility debt relief options directly on the utility bills in the top left-hand corner, which are starred on your papers. Yesterday, after the petition launched, I heard from Mr. James Barnes and was informed that the city stopped printing the disconnection dates on utility bills while the moratorium was in effect. Thankfully, starting this month, there will be disconnection dates on all utility bills. And while I'm very glad to hear that, I also wish the city would have resumed that practice as soon as the moratorium ended two months ago, instead of taking two months to do so. There's still one more ask unfulfilled on the petition, which is printing debt relief options like our Florida or the city's project share directly on utility bills. I was told by Mr. James Barnes that option is not feasible due to timing. And if that's not a feasible option, then is the Insights newsletter an option? Or can the city publish a press release or FAQ that details the options and steps for residents to receive financial assistance? The National Rent Moratorium ended last month, and financial programs should be widely advertised to retain and support our vulnerable population, especially while and during hurricane season. I hope you all enjoy your summer break, but before leaving, please consider preventing disconnections by adequately communicating unknown options to residents and saving residents' time from having to call the city and waiting in a queue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, any other speakers coming for us today?
No, sir.
All right, we are on city commission information sharing of ideas. Commissioner Williams Cox?
Thank you, Mayor. As usual, I want to share some updated information regarding the South Side Action Plan. Visit our website. You'll see that the website has been updated, refreshed. I think I saw Devin in the room somewhere. Yeah, there he is. Devin and his team continuing to be roundabout in our community, collecting information. And they are beginning to act on that information to provide some analysis and evaluation of what people are saying that they want, well, I should say, what we say we want on the South Side. And so, I want to just keep this before us because the middle word of this is action. And I want you to know that there's a lot of action going on. So please visit talgo.com/southside and see the refreshed information that's been provided there. And look out, there'll probably be in a neighborhood our event near you soon.
Excellent. Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to announce some of the activities that will be going on or programs surrounding the wake and home-going service of the late President Dr. Frederick S. Humphries. He will lie in repose at the Lawson Center from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. on Friday, July 9th. And all of this is open to the public. There will be a public wake from 6:00 to 7:00. And then, the oldest, baddest, boldest, and most revered fraternity, Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated...
My brother.
...will have its Omega service, which is open to the public from 7:00 to 8:00. On Saturday, July 10th, at the Lawson Center on Wanish Way, again, the late President Humphries will lie in repose from 11:30 to 12:30 p.m. And then, the memorial, memory celebration service will be from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. And of course, the public is invited to attend. So I just wanted to make sure everyone had that information if you're so inclined to attend. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Matlow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't bring anything today, but just in response to the public speaker, what would be required to add that kind of language in the information bubble for relief options on utility bills? Manager, Mr. Barnes?
Mr. Barnes, would you mind helping with that answer? The question is, as we use the messaging in the top left of the utility bills, what's required? Are there any limitations related to them?
Oh, Mayor, Commissioners, yes, it is. The portion of the bill that's printed to customers for customer messaging, it is sort of a stagnant field. Takes about three weeks for us to work with the vendor to get the appropriate language to go out. Once it goes out, if there's a change, then it takes, it's not an easy change. It takes a couple of weeks to get that changed. So we didn't feel it was appropriate because if we put other agencies, they run out of funding, they change the criteria, the information is stagnant. That's why in earlier presentations, we talked about the number of text messages we sent out, emails we sent out, all the other mediums and forums, because that's really sort of a stagnant field. If we do an insert, it changed the weight classification. And then, the postage service charges more, and it does become very costly.
So that's kind of a pre-printed letterhead-type bill? Is that...
No, we usually determine that about a month out before. So if it's, let's say, now the August bills, the statement that we have is determined end of June, 1st of July, what would go on there?
And are text messages and emails for relief options still going out to people scheduled for disconnect?
No, Commissioners. We, based on your direction, return back to our normal business practices. So now, every customer is getting their first, second bill prior to any suspension of service. If we have their information, they get a text or a phone call and an email, which we call is the three-day advance notice. But all of those forms are sort of the normal business operations. The only time a customer does not and did not get a disconnection date is when we authorize us to have a moratorium. And so, it had been very confusing during that year. that year to put a disconnection date there, and we've said that we're not going to disconnect. So we did not have a date in that time. Once we resume that practice, then we start putting the dates back on there.
Okay. Thank you. And Mr. City Manager, if there's any way we can continue just communicating until our Florida funds run out the best we can with people scheduled for disconnect, if any of that option is available, I think that'd be helpful. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Porter, are you with us? Anything for the good of the order?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I would just encourage, yeah, if there is any way that we can be getting as much information as possible about relief options, but other than that, nothing for me.
Excellent. Thank you. Just a couple of, just a quick comment. I see that we have many of our department leaders that are here with us today. On days like today, I am especially thankful for every man and woman that works for the City of Tallahassee, especially when we have these storm events that come through. I want you to know that I know and we recognize that when a named storm hits the Gulf of Mexico, there are hundreds, if not maybe over 1,000 people at the City of Tallahassee throughout every department that goes into a special storm mode, and that you all work around the clock in your respective fields to keep our community safe. And sometimes even after the storm passes, you have to go to other communities to help them out, because that's what we do in Tallahassee. We take care of each other, and we take care of others. I just want you to know, especially since Elsa has passed us, how much we appreciate each and every one of you and everybody in your departments. Mr. Barnes in particular, when you were up testifying, it helps me and reminds me that, you know, we have storm events that come through and disruption of power. People call your office not to say thank you per se during the event, you know, and the customer service that comes out of the great men and women out of your department on the front lines, too, are fantastic. So I don't want to let this moment go by without each one of y'all knowing how much we truly appreciate your departments and what y'all do. Starts at the top with our appointments. We appreciate it as well. This has been a great meeting, and everybody have a great, a great night. We'll see you, I guess, next week at the joint meeting, and that's our last one before summer recess. So we stand adjourned.